Okay, um, to start off with, well, good morning, everybody. To start off with, the, uh, the city of Dubuque, reached out to me a couple of weeks ago about wanting to put a, a weight limit embargo on Old Highway between Cypress Road and, and US 20. And, uh, so this, the email I just handed to you, this is exactly what they're describing and then, sounds like they want to put a weight limit of five tons on there. So their concern is, um, with the new overlay they, they just put on there and the, uh, mainly, I think the quarry traffic that's coming out of the quarry entrance, taking Old Highway and then going, going from, you know, to their business from there. They want to try to push them to, um, you know, the new interchange there at Cypress and US 20. I do have some concerns about this, you know, being in a major collector highway. I have some concerns about putting an embargo on, on a major collector road. But I, I do respect, you know, that they've requested this, half of this road is theirs, um, you know, half it's ours. It's mostly our road up to Cousins Road from Cypress and from there on, it's theirs. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. I'm not looking for any decisions today necessarily. Just want to at least bring it to your, to your attention and, you know, in my require a work session with the city, you know, in the future, but just wanted to kind of get your thoughts on this. I can't say I really have a strong recommendation for it or, or necessarily against it. I do had, just have some mainly concerns about it being a major collector highway. You know, um, I've had a request to do similar, do a similar embargo west of Cypress Road, from residents over there, just from the truck traffic that comes through there and makes a noise. You know, it's a major collector highway and, um, I, I've, I've always kind of pushed back on that, that, you know, we need to keep that open for, for, for truck access. So.
The city would be able to embargo their section of the road without?
Well, that's where it gets complicated because yeah, they could put up a sign on the, the far east end, but they, yeah, they, they, they want to coordinate over to Cypress Road, you know, they could probably put up a sign there at Cousins, but, you know, the truck traffic is turning from Cypress as well. So if you don't have a sign down there approved by us, it doesn't make a lot of sense to, for them to put it up on their end.
Can somebody put it up on the screen? Show me Cypress Old Highway. A lot of the truck traffic is coming right out of their industrial park.
That's part, yeah. So from 20 over there to where the cursor is there at Cypress, they would like to embargo that entire stretch. Now, of course, local deliveries have to be allowed. So if something's going to the, the fairgrounds or I guess anything else, a lot is law in there, local deliveries would be exempt from, uh, an embargo. But what the city has conveyed to me is that they're seeing a lot of trucks come out of the quarry and they're, they're short cutting across Old Highway instead of going down to the, uh, the new interchange there.
I would understand their concern. They just overlaid it, which we did too, correct?
Uh, we haven't done that yet, but next year we will. Yep.
So it'd go with your recommendation on it. Start the discussion with them anyway.
Yeah, I think it's worth, I wanted to bring it to your attention first before we, bring it, bring the city in or have further discussion with them. So, I, I do want to have a little more discussion with, uh, with Bob, Gus and the team there and just kind of get their thoughts on this.
Is there any restrictions on the rest of Old 20 heading west?
No, no, there's no embargo at all.
Be doing an overlay on that next year?
Yep.
Pretty massive one?
Yes. Yep.
I, I don't see where embargo or restrictions would be purposeful or meaningful.
Well, they just
Going for us and
They're hard to enforce.
We're going to be doing the entire Old 20 and so.
It was, our product knows that very well. Enforcement part.
Yes. Well, all it does is it just creates angst for those that live on the road when they see a violation or two. And it's probably challenging for the drivers as well to understand all of the roads embargoed and the fewer the better.
Well, my concern is okay if we embargo that stretch, why aren't we embargoing the west stretch to?
And that was where I was going as well. So, I understand that's a stretch in the city. So they're interested in that piece, but yeah, I, I have a little interest or based upon what we've discussed today. If there's new evidence or new ideas, I'm open to them, but not high on my list.
They may proceed anyway, right? I mean, I don't, I think they may be informational and maybe not asking for permission.
Well.
When we embargo's are tough.
Yeah, it, it's going to complicate things. I mean, I can go back to them and say, no, we're not interested. Yeah, they could choose to put it up at Cousins and, and the east end of Old Highway. That gets even trickier to enforce then. Now you have trucks who don't know what's going on unless they could put a, uh, embargo ahead sign or something at, at Cypress, that might be something that they could, they could entertain. Well, they're actually looking for a weight limit instead of a triple axle sign, which we typically do. They're, they're looking to actually weight limit the road. So, actually by law, I think you have to actually have a weight limit, um, warning ahead sign at the next intersection. So that's something they could entertain, um, having a, a warning, warning sign at Cypress and then putting up their sign at Cousins and then the east end.
There's a lot, well, a lot of truck traffic does come in Old Highway and to Cypress to hit the Chevy now, but I guess that really doesn't. There's a lot of truck traffic going into the fairgrounds also.
Right.
Yeah. I don't intend to stand in their way. The city, I mean, they certainly can do what they think they can, but and they may very well go without us. They, signs are going to go up May 23rd. I'm hoping they're waiting to hear back from.
Oh yeah. Well, they were, they were, they thought they were going to go up pretty fast and then I put a, put some brakes on it. You know, we need to get approval from the board before we move forward with that.
Yeah. And didn't we, don't we have cooperative projects on various roads in that area?
Sure.
I think going alone isn't really a spirit of cooperation if we're going to continue to do cooperative projects.
Yeah, it was, they put out an email and they were looking to do it like next week. You know, the following week and, uh, no, I'm not ready to move on to that quickly. I want to have some discussion on this, being that it's a major collector highway.
I would, uh, I guess they can do whatever they want. I'm not really in favor of doing anything with it on our end personally.
I think that's where I am as well.
That's where I would lean towards, um, unless, you know, I, I got a better argument from them, but I think it's mostly from their new overlay. They want to just kind of try to control the, the, the loads that are coming across that. So.
It's the nature of the road where it is.
True.
I think that'd give you some direction.
Sure. That helps a lot.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate you bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Okay, um, flip over to the airport shop discussion. Okay, um, you know, this thing is evolving. We've had several different iterations of a $2 million building or trying to look for different ideas. And I just heard a rumor a couple of weeks ago about now there's a possibility that the old Key West DOT shop could be a for sale first to the city or the county. So I checked into that and, um, apparently what was conveyed to me months ago, um, was that at that time they, they thought the way the land was purchased, it had to be auctioned off and not just offered up to this, to the local government jurisdictions first. Well, they've changed their tune on that and maybe they, they found a different code section on that. So they are willing to offer it up to the city or the county first. And then if, if one of us, uh, puts, you know, denies that, then it'll go to an auction. So the most recent information I've got here is, and I'll just read this out. This comes from a Rick Skinner. Um, he's the property management, uh, local public agency production coordinator out of the right away bureau of the DOT. So they're currently waiting for the platte survey to be completed for this parcel. Um, the area will be, um, in the five acre range. They've had a request from the driver services, the driver's license station to retain an area for motorcycle and CDL testing. That issue has yet to be resolved. When we know the status of the driver services requests and we have the final platte survey, then we will proceed to have the parcel appraised by an independent cert, certified general appraiser. When we have the fair market value, the praise value, the parcel will be offered to the local governments. The survey is due by the end of June and it takes 75 days plus or minus for the appraisal process. And then I, I kind of requested, okay, do you have a general idea of what the fair market value is going to be? Is it $2 million? Is it $200,000? Don't know. They, they just, they, you know, they have to go through this appraisal process. So this completely throws a monkey wrench in everything as far as the schedule, uh, to get, get a building put up this, this fall. But I'd like to wait on this to see where this falls, to see what that value is going to be. If it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's going to be well worth it to us. Even, even in the condition of the buildings, um, you know, there's still some, one or two buildings that we could use out there. And then slowly demolish them and then make it what we want. There are some issues with the site. I think there's some underground storage tanks that could be, um, a problem, but that's something we'd have to negotiate with the DOT on whether they remove it or not. So I just wanted to throw this out to you, give you an update on this. I think it'd be prudent to wait on this and just kind of see how this plays out before we decide to move forward with a $2 million building at the airport shop. Thoughts?
I would agree with, uh, what the, uh, underground storage tanks, obviously that's all under DOT if there would be contamination or anything.
Right.
So we definitely want that researched before we
Yep.
Them too. So.
Absolutely.
That issue could make a purchase of or build a new building a much better deal in theory, depending upon if it's never required. I think we can take this off your to-do list in terms of an issue that you have to be able to, we won't know something before your last day, Anthony.
Yeah, it's probably going to be, I'm guessing at least August before we kind of know an answer on this.
So it would be helpful to me and probably to the department, just that you have, I'm sure you do a file with your thoughts and any directions and, you know, accumulated to date. So that when we look at this again with a new engineer, we'll have a, you know, documented your thoughts as best we can.
Absolutely. Yep. Yep. We'll keep this moving. So I, I just think it's worthwhile to take a look at this before we pull the trailer on another building.
That makes sense. Who communicated anything to the airport, Todd Dalton?
I have not specifically, um, you know, not necessarily making a decision on this. I do want to give a Todd and let him know that we, we want to take some time to look at this. So I, I still need to do that, but you know, um, I still think the airport's a great solution as well. But it, I, I don't want to miss an opportunity here if it's, if it's a really good value. So. But yeah, I will convey that to Todd as well. Okay. Any questions on emails for the report? Okay, if it's okay, I'd like to invite Assistant County Engineer Russell Weber up to give the engineer's report. That's right.
Good morning, Russell.
Morning, Russell. Um, list of our, uh, ongoing projects here to start at the top, uh, Old Farley Rockville Road, River City plans to, um, finish the surfacing lifts this week, obviously pending the weather. Old Massey, uh, Chick Frye is going to come in and start, um, finishing all the road work in there as far as, you know, rip rap and miscellaneous widening and culverts. Sundown is anticipated for, uh, June 13th. And again, that might be delayed with some weather. I know the contractor got a little behind with this wet spring. So, um, the North Brinkston Bridge and Hickory Valley Bridge, Taylor Construction plans on coming in, in the June, July period, and they are going to go back to back. They don't know which one they're going to do first, but when they come and do one, they'll go to the other. So those will coincide. Goose Hill Road, um, progressive structures still working through the, uh, precast installments, but they will anticipate starting in August for that. And Thunder Road, Stager will come in and start the culvert work on July 9th. And the John Deere portion, um, Pierce Tobin plans to start breaking ground around the June 13th timeframe and message boards are coming this week, I believe, if not installed already to let the public know. City of Dubuque starting their portion yet, the Arturo today, but John Deere's will be at the following week.
Where's the city starting at?
I believe they're going to start Pennsylvania, um, intersection. Um, and I know they have some shoulder paving to do as well. So there might be some kind of combination work going on, but Pennsylvania might be the intersection to stay away from right away.
I can, obviously I come from Asbury, so you can already see the traffic pattern is all. I mean, it was, well, I thought they did a great job notifying people. It's been in the paper a couple of times from page. So, and, but yeah, you can see it already. I'm so thankful school's out. So we don't have to deal with that issue. See. Russell, I just wanted to make a mention, the gentleman who lives on Old Massey Road.
Yes.
I just drove by. I did not have a chance to coordinate with you to go, um, visit with him. I'm just going to call this afternoon. I don't think I'm going to ask for either of you to assist with that. So I'll just follow up, but I appreciate that you were willing to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm phone call away. If you ever need my
Yeah.
assistance in a
I mean, I drove it. It's I mean, obviously what we're doing to the untrained eye is the obvious thing to do. So I don't, you know, I'm not accustomed to citizens saying you're improving something too much. That's a kind of an odd thing for somebody to say. So, but I don't make that loose end for you.
All right. Thanks.
Anything else for us right now?
Assume you never got down there after I talked to you on
What's that?
On Old Massey when I called you on that. Did you ever get down to look at that or?
Yeah, I, I took a look at the culvert, you know, the, the alignment of the culvert. Um, I think that was kind of his main issue.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Just wondering.
Yep.
Thank you.
Have you contacted him again, Rick? Have you been back in contact? Not just since you and I talked.
I have not. I know Rick has talked to the staff a couple of times, you know, while they're out there.
Yeah.
So, but I have not specifically talked to him. No.
Okay. I'll call him this afternoon.
Hey, any other questions for us?
Need help, Jay?
Nope. I think under general road discussion, um, I'd like to ask about Sundown Road and ATVs. So we've had some discussion. The law has changed obviously and our ordinance will sunset. And I'm not, I'm, I'm asking you because we are in limited time with you, Anthony, but just big picture about that. What do you, what do you see? That's clearly a road that's not meant for ATV traffic.
Well, as I understand it, all state highways are not a part of this ATV ordinance. That, or law that's been passed. I mean, to me, Sundown Road is every bit of a similarity to a state highway with the traffic count that we see there. You know, the, the, there's obviously a lot of high speed, uh, traffic that's, that's traveling that road. I just have concerns with, you know, a slow moving vehicle, um, on that road. So that's the one that really sticks out to me. Uh, you know, everything else is negotiable, I guess, but that's the one, that's the one that's most similar to state highways.
I would have concerns with it also, but we're just driving it not that long ago and it does, we did widen out the shoulders. Pardon?
The shoulders are paved now as well.
Right. Yep. I guess I have concerns with it, but then again, on the other side, it's, it is wider than some of the roads that we allow now.
Sure.
And so I guess I, I could go either way on it, I guess.
Oh, you salt on it in the winter now too. So I mean, I think overall we treat that road clearly like it's a state highway and our maintenance and, but I don't know that there's anything we can do about it. I just, it would be foolish to not ask you the question because of your experience with the county and now with the change.
Yeah, I'm just going off of, you know, sort of a conservative nature on that. Um, it may be fine, you know, I mean, the, there's been no incidents at all really to speak of on other roads. Old Highway is allowed, you know, and there's fairly high traffic count and narrow road and narrow shoulders on that road. So that, that one has been okay. Just Sundown has always been that one that's most similar to a state road that I, that I've had concerns with.
And I would agree with you in, uh, Old Highway Road is one of them that I was thinking of the we allow and it's windy and it's narrow and we haven't had any problems and, um, there's no lack of speed on that either.
Right.
That's Jay.
The board is planning to adopt an ordinance. Let's talk.
Right.
Just discussion.
Yeah. So I think we've been through that. Um, the states responded with the law. Unless we act, we're going to be dealing with the state law.
And I'm not raising this as a discussion about our ordinance. I'm raising this as a, a point of information with our experienced county engineer who's going to be leaving us. Just so that's one of my loose ends in terms of, I'd like to visit with you about other issues. Um, you know, there's a contract provision that you would want to extend it into your contract. There's just some clerical issues and some, you know, administrative things I'd like to make sure we facilitate a transition on as well. So I'm, I would not read much into my comment other than it's nice to know from Anthony while we're all here listening to that.
I don't have anything further. Jay.
Great.
Thank you very much, Anthony.
Motion to recess till nine.
Second.
Have a motion to second, to recess until nine. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. We are in recess until nine. Aye. We are in recess until nine. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do not.
Move forward with proclamations. We have a proclamation commemorating the 50th anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Clean Water Act. Whereas the Clean Water Act was passed with bipartisan support by the United States Congress and signed by President Richard Nixon in nineteen seventy-two. And whereas the Clean Water Act established the basic structure for regulating pollutant discharges into waters and established the national goal of fishable. Swimable waters and the elimination of pollution and navigable water. And whereas an estimated sixteen thousand five hundred and seven miles of rivers and streams in the United States were made swimable. And twenty-four thousand seven hundred and thirteen more miles were made fishable by two thousand due to the Clean Water Act. And whereas there are continued challenges to flooding and water pollution in four thousand five hundred miles of Iowa's rivers. And sixty-eight thousand acres of Iowa's lakes that are impaired for swimming and primary con- contact recreation. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has delegated authority, authority to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. To implement and enforce the Clean Water Act in the state of Iowa. And whereas the Iowa Department of Natural Resources is committed to strategies and programs. To achieve improvements in water quality by addressing both point and non-point sources of pollution. Whereas Dubuque, whereas Dubuque County actively partners with state, federal, private, nonprofit partners, as well as developing initiatives of its own. To enhance water quality and reduce pollution and nutrient runoff in Dubuque County. Now therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors celebrates the progress made since the passage of the Clean Water Act. And encourages the people of Dubuque County to observe the 50th anniversary. And to develop plans and programs for future to promote clean water and to enjoy Iowa's plentiful water resources. Proclamation adopted the sixth day of June twenty twenty-two. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to receive?
I will make a motion to accept and approve the proclamation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept and approve the proclamation. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Do we have anyone in chambers that wanted to accept? Okay. Anyone on Zoom wishing to address that?
Nobody's indicating.
Okay. Move to approval of the minutes of the meeting of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
What should you approve?
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Have two consent items, a cigarette application for the Highway twenty truck plaza and a cigarette. Application for the Mid Mart Incorporated.
I will make a motion to approve both consent items, A and B.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve both consent items. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Vote for human procedures, uh, no public hearings, no prep plats for approval, approval. Action items, uh, we have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary right-of-way documents, documents for the HMA resurfacing RCP. Culverts new single box on Goose Hill Road, project LFM dash P two-three parentheses zero-two dash seven X dash three-one. Any questions on that? We have Anthony here.
I do not have any. I've reviewed the documents. It seems pretty straightforward. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the right-of-way documents on Goose Hill Road.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the right-of-way documents on Goose Hill Road. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve necessary documents with origin design for a supplemental agreement. Number one for construction engineering and observation services for the improvements to Northwest Arterial D ten. South John Deere Road, West John Deere Road project.
I would appreciate some comment from Anthony if I might. Russell.
Russell.
Fantastic. Engineering department. Thank you.
Give context.
Yep, um, just a little bit. So this agreement would just be to allow origin, um, the APYA program, which is required by the county. Is for the, on the state level, and it's a web-based programming that you could log in. Your diaries and your items and there's payments. So it's a necessary program that we use. On the county level, it's required by the county, but it's not, I believe next year is going to be required by the city. So this grant will just kind of help fund that.
The amount of twelve thousand dollars in?
Yes.
Is this for both portions, both the John Deere portion and the Northwest Arterio portion for the engineering work they do?
This is just for the John Deere portion. The city Dubuque is not required to do the APYA, uh, program yet, but the county is. And, um, APYA is just a way to, to, to track bid items and, and, um, you know. Pay valuters and, and pay valuter system and everything, uh, through the, the, this web-based program that goes for the DOT. Um, so on a federal project like this, we, this has, this is now a requirement. So, um, the origin design has requested to make this a part of the grant, um, build grant, uh, reimburse reimbursement process. And, uh, the DOT has said that it is an ultimate expense. So that's why we're coming to you with this.
Okay.
The agreement was previously approved. It's just that we're adding APYA licenses.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, originally they did not have that in their estimate and then they found out that they have to have this program. So we're making this an amendment.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the necessary documents with origin design. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve. Next, we have a resolution to approve the temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two to August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, for the two thousand and twenty-two and Iowa baseball experience event. I believe that just deals with Lansing Road, Dyersville East Road area for the Field of Dreams game.
I just had a question as to whether it's about the same length of time Tuesday through the following.
Go ahead.
Last year.
Go.
Nobody in Zoom can hear you without, sorry.
So this was a request made by the Sheriff's Office through Anthony's department. Last year, we requested that Dyersville East Road be closed down between the two golf course road intersections and then Lansing Road be closed down for the baseball game. We weren't sure exactly what the parking situation was going to look like at that point. And so that's why we had the Dyersville East Road closed down and also this year we're, we're only closing Lansing Road. But the reason we're closing it from Tuesday through Saturday, they are hosting a minor league baseball game between the Cedar Rapids Colonels and Quad City River Bandits on the ninth. They are expecting that to draw, they're expecting that to be a capacity crowd because they're both local teams. So we're going to have the same traffic issues as we do for the major league game on the, on Thursday. And then with Friday being the rain out date, we had to extend that to Saturday morning. But if the, if the game goes off on Thursday like, like it's supposed to, the road will just be open Friday morning. People will be able to travel it or, and do whatever they need to do. We just needed to have this out there that it was going to be closed or restricted travel during this time. So people were aware that that may about, be a possibility while they're traveling. But, you know, we will be as accommodating as possible, depending on the situation with the games.
Thank you. Any questions?
And then I assume the city of Dyersville will have their own closures and other traffic diversions on the other sections?
I, I would assume. I'm not sure exactly what they're doing. We just, the, our senior management team, we had a meeting last week and we were discussing things we needed to get, start getting prepared for, and this was one of the things that we had, that we knew we needed to kind of get out there, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the temporary delay of travel restrictions on August ninth through August thirteenth.
Second. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the temporary delayed travel restrictions between August ninth and thirteenth, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the food service contract with Trinity Services Group for the Law Enforcement Center. Sheriff Kennedy here for context, if there's questions.
Yeah, just for some background, so we got four bids on this. We got one from Airmark, who is our, our current vendor. They actually came in, I think they were the highest, weren't they, Mike? Or, yeah. And then we had one from Consolidated Foods out of Des Moines. They were, they were on the higher side as well as Summit. The fourth one was from Trinity Organization. We have a relationship with their parent organization. It's, it doesn't mean much to you guys, but we have a Keef company which does commissary and some other things in the jail. ICS, which is a key company, does like our phones and our visitation systems. And then Trinity is also underneath that, that same parent organization. So we were able to kind of consolidate those three things and we got a pretty good price. They also are, in addition to, to giving us very good prices on the individual daily meals, they also provided, was it a hundred thousand? Or seventy-five? Okay. Yeah. So depending on how much inmate labor we're able to provide, there's also a hundred thousand and seventy-five thousand dollar contingency for upgrades to the kitchen, which basically if we need something new, they will pay for it. And if our, if, once our contract runs, runs out with them, if we choose someone else, the, the equipment that they purchase, it belongs to us. So that's seemed like a pretty good deal. So we decided to go with them and we're looking to get started there. The contract starts August first and they needed about six weeks to kind of get the transfer made between Airmark and Trinity. So we'd like to get the contract signed today if we could.
Make a motion to approve the resolution approving the food service contract with Trinity Services Group.
I will second that with some discussion. I'm set a few more questions. So I think for my term here, it's been Airmark all the time. Can you just tell me your thought process other than price of switching with the vendor and what you, what your expectations are with the new vendor?
Yeah, so Airmark was a very good vendor for us for many years. And part of that was due to, we had an outstanding kitchen manager. She, she did a great job, took care of everybody. I know she took care of you guys over here. And, and just so you know, Trinity is also going to offer that same service where they're going to, it, it's just going to be a little different format where you're going to have to order a little bit farther ahead of time. You can't just call them up like two minutes before and say, hey, can you bring me a salad? You know, but, but Iris, the kitchen manager for Airmark was, was outstanding. Unfortunately, there, she had an accident last fall, as you guys well know, and passed away. And since Iris left, we have had a ridiculous amount of struggles with Airmark, trying to get quality service. Food portion sizes have been coming up to some, to, in some of the inmate meals that are severely inadequate. We've addressed this with them. They have corrected most of that, those issues. But since Iris' passing, we've just basically had a constant battle with them, just trying to get things done, the stuff that they're supposed to be doing. And not even doing the external food service, which, you know, a lot of the other people in, in our building and this building had, were used to. So we thought that combined with the pricing and, and the issues that they've had, that it was probably time to do something different and, you know, give somebody else a, a chance at it. You know, we're hoping that Trinity, they pay, they pay their staff much better than what Airmark did. So we're hoping that that will bring more consistency to the kitchen than, even though Iris did a great job and she was consistent, there was a lot of turnover amongst the, the people that worked for her and stuff. So, you know, we're hoping that this will bring a lot more consistency to, to the kitchen and much fewer problems.
I appreciate that background. That, that helps a lot. Do, do you know an estimated budget amount that we anticipate this contract will be for? I know it's a sliding scale based on number of inmates and meals, but do you have a general ballpark estimate to, would be the value of this contract? If not, I can take that off.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could probably, I mean, if, you have the, if you have the numbers, I mean, I can punch something up quick that has average on a hundred and fifty inmates.
Not vowing to make you do math in public. I did see in the.
Okay, yeah. So between three hundred and seventy-five thousand and five hundred and twenty-five thousand, depending.
On how many meals and how many inmates are there.
Right. The biggest factor right now for us is going to be inmate labor. Since we have switched to doing the ankle monitoring, which has been very successful and we're, we're going to have, we're on pace to have a very good year doing that. That's really cut into our inmate labor supply. So, yeah, so I guess we're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul a little bit in that aspect. But we, we have worked out an agreement with them where if we, we have to provide at least two to three inmates for labor. And then if we're able to do that for the year, that's when we'll be in the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar range. If we are not able to provide enough inmate labor, then we'll be in the five twenty-five, because then they're going to have to pay people to come in and, and do the labor, so.
Thank you. I have no more questions.
Have a motion and a second to approve the food contract with Trinity, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
I do.
Carries. Next, we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for the city of Luxembourg from the county's ARP allocation. That was for two hundred and fifty thousand. That's two hundred and fifty thousand.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the allocation of project funds to the city of Luxembourg in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for the city of Rickardsville from the county's ARP allocation. And that is for five hundred thousand for the sewer relocation.
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second. Have a motion and a second to approve the allocation of project funds for the city of Rickardsville.
I was just pausing here because we had notes in our ARPA that said we just moved it forward, but I remember we had this discussion. So we, we've come to consensus last week on this, correct?
Five hundred thousand.
Yeah. All right.
Have a motion and a second to approve the allocation to city of Rickardsville, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for the rural, rural community food pantry from the county's ARP allocation, and that was for one hundred and seventy-five thousand for the Dyersville Food Pantry.
Should approve.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the allocation of funds for the rural community food pantry, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution for the approval of the two thousand and twenty-two Dubuque Land Stewardship Trutera Program Farmer Payments.
Want to talk on that, Zach, or?
Oh, there's Eric. I didn't see Eric sitting over there. Sorry, Eric.
Hiding back there.
Was hiding back there.
Good morning.
Morning, Eric.
Eric Schmeckel, Watership Program Director with Dubuque County Watership Program, Soil Water Conservation District. So, yeah, just a, an update, I guess, on the watershed program, land stewardship funding. This morning, we come requesting payment and resolution for our Trutera program. Zach has been working with a lot of the remaining farmers from the two thousand and twenty-one growing season and has added ten new growers into the twenty-two season as well, too. Acres are up, impacted acres are up from last year in the program itself. As you guys remember, the way funding works in this is first half payments go out at the time of sign-up. Second half payments go out after the conservation practice or the improvement practice has been taken place and verified in the fall. So our second payments would go out in December. We're coming to you this morning with an update with the Trutera program. Hundred thousand dollars has been allocated out of the land stewardship funding for that. Right now, there, after today's approval, there would be roughly seven thousand dollars left in that program or so for potentially one or two more farmers to get signed up.
Questions?
I do have one question. If today we did have a proclamation related to the Clean Water Act, any correlation or additional comment you can make as far as the connection to our agricultural programs and, and clean water in Dubuque County?
I think the, the proclamation was, was very much, is an important step forward for what we're trying to do and what we're recognizing. I commend the supervisors, all three of you, for making watershed water quality and flood reduction a priority moving forward in your initiatives. We believe these programs are achieving that and complement the, the Clean Water Act and things that we're working to do for our water quality in Dubuque.
Question for you, Eric. On that same, kind of same tone, same vein, we have an application before the county in our, our ARPA funding request from Silt. And I'm wondering if you think that that's also similar to what we're doing here, how that, how that ties together, if it does.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I'm familiar with the application that Silt has submitted. Been in contact with Susan over the last few months and, and you recently as well, talking about the application and things that potentially the impact. So what we can do to, to look at permanent conservation easements and permanent easements on farms. It definitely would play an impact in our programming, will definitely be a, a supportive role in, in our ability that, what, what we're doing as far as land stewardship and land implementation. I think Silt has a, has a role and has a place in Dubuque County. I think it would be a, a good program. And I think it would be a necessary step for looking at, again, permanent conservation easements in Dubuque and then making that connection to more local foods throughout our community as well, too.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for the Trutera program for farmer payments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Dubuque Land Stewardship Trutera Program Farmer Payments, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we have another one for the resolution, the allocation of land stewardship funds, Eco Services Program Funds for Carlton Bush Project. Eric.
Yeah, so this is, you know, one of the, one of the tiers in the land stewardship funding is our Edge of Field or Ecosystem Services Funding. Roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars was allocated from fiscal year twenty-two. We'll be using those dollars. As with projects in the past, anytime we can leverage state and federal dollars, that's our priority first. We partner with NRCS, IDALS, and our local technicians in Dubuque County to work on ecosystem service projects. And in this case, a sediment basin, potentially a pond, if it is holding water for Carlton Bush. As you can see, it is being leveraged with state funding. The Soil and Water District Commissioners have approved thirty-six percent of the project. So today we come, we come this morning asking to approve twenty-one percent of the total project, bringing Mr. Bush up to that seventy-five cost share rate, which is where we've been the last couple of years since we started the ecosystem service project. So the design, as you, as you should have been in your packet, the design was included. It is surveyed and designed, signed off on the engineer, and it's ready to go. Carlton is willing to sign the twenty-year maintenance agreement as well, too, just like our other projects in the past.
Any questions?
This one we'll be able to see from the air as we come in.
Yes, yes, very much, very much.
To approve the resolution.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the allocation of land stewardship fund, Eco Services Program Funds for Carlton Bush Project, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries.
All right, thank you. We have a few more, a few more ecosystem service projects kind of in the works right now. They're not fully designed yet, but we've got about three or four more of them that they're working on right now. So just kind of a quick update. And then the, the Soil and Water Outcome Fund. As you guys know, the, I think we talked about in the past, but IDALS has matched the county's one hundred and fifty thousand. So we've essentially doubled our outcome funding for the year. That program is going well. Again, we'll, we will definitely be over, above our acres from last year impacted with that program as well, too. It's been a little bit of a slower update, but we're, we're hopeful in the next four to six weeks to give an update on the outcome fund as well, too.
Have an update on the survey or the technician that was being hired?
Technician has been hired. Yeah, the state, state technician has been hired at the district. He's been in training now for about a month.
Would be very helpful, I think.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good to see you, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Thanks, Zach. Move along to correspondence. We have three minor management plans, a minor management plan from Steve Holger. We have three manure management plans, a manure management plan from Steve Holger, number six six zero four nine. Street Farms Incorporated, six seven eight three six, and Jason Wolf, number six six three eight nine. There's no changes on either any of the three, that's correct?
One of the.
Strike, strike farms does have some changes.
Right. Street Farms had changed crop rotation.
I will make a motion to receive and file all three manure management plans.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to receive and file the three manure management plans. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have the vacancies for informational purposes only. Move on to personnel requisitions. Have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for permanent full-time deputy sheriff for jail division due to resignation.
I will make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for deputy sheriff. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then I am sorry.
Yes, aye, yes.
We have a motion to approve personnel requisition for a full-time county engineer due to the resignation of Anthony Barget. Something posted.
I had some questions about this. If Dawn, if you could maybe step us through how how this is going to go in light of your resignation as well. So how will this? How will our calendar look for this?
Anthony and I are going to meet in the next two weeks to to present some options to you, but just as an update, Chair Podoff, myself, Anthony, and Shirley from the chairperson at Delaware County did have a a conference call last week. Anthony had informed us that there was discussion at Delaware County to start their own recruitment. If you recall, we do have a twenty-eight E agreement with them shared services with our county engineer. And so Shirley confirmed with us that they were going to let that expire upon Anthony's departure from us. They there was desire just to go on and try to fill their position themselves. And so what you have reflected here, Anthony and I did take a look at the wage for this position, and with removing those dual role county responsibilities, we felt that this one thirty to almost one sixty would mean competitive. We looked at our ISAC comparables, and we thought this would be a competitive wage for this position. So this would no longer be a shared position with Delaware County at this time.
So I would ask my colleagues if we might look at having another a work session this week, a special time. For purposes of looking at personnel, we've got high-level recruiting we need to do, and I certainly would appreciate having Don Sherman's expertise to start us through these high-level looks. So I don't know if that's something, you know, we might be interested in doing.
Yeah, I'd definitely be open to that.
I'd be open. I'm free Wednesday. Go and set up something for Wednesday afternoon.
How's about I reach out to the three supervisors after and we come together for a time that works for the four of us?
Are we, are you thinking supervisor McDonald that you would like to have this personnel requisition included in that discussion and therefore not take any action, which I'm open to as well? Certainly could amend things, but if we approve things today, you're just meeting on something you've already approved.
Well, I guess I I'm I'm inclined to approve it. I don't think we're going to get a better answer. We've got, you know, the opinion from Anthony and from Dawn that we need to do the salary range has been identified. I'd like to have that process begin. But in light of other human resources issues, I think I would like to make that be part of our discussion, just because we're going to need to see the calendar and timing and, you know, who's going to do the recruitment, and those kinds of issues need to be discussed. So that's what I'm proposing. I'm happy to make the motion to approve this unless someone feels we shouldn't do that yet. But that that's kind of my thought, Jay.
That 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 works for me. At that meeting, though, I would like to see some of the maybe the back work you've done related to comparables and salary.
Absolutely.
So if we're going to dive a little deeper in this, I might as well look at the numbers that you've discussed.
Do you want to let this sit then? We'll put that on for one.
I am also confident that the numbers you are providing are good, and so that's that's the reason we we have people on board to make those decisions, but I would just like if we're going to dive deeper into this position and or others have those that information available. So I'm comfortable approving this today. My my thought is, though, if you're going to, you know, dive into it deeper, why approve it now if it's going to be near term? You know, then set this already in motion, and sometimes when you learn and discuss and take a little more time to understand views and different information, you might come with a different decision.
Motion to table for Wednesday.
I will second that.
Motion table. Second, all in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. And it's tabled until Wednesday. We'll get Kevin to set up a time after discussion.
Here, if we could, I could. I just I know this is kind of maybe the one of the first public, you know, announcements related to Anthony's retirement, and certainly it's a girl had an article in either today or this weekend. Just like to personally thank him for his service at Dubuque County and all the staff at the engineering and road and bridge department. Done a wonderful job during my term, just providing good, quality, safe roads, bridges, structures, and then all the maintenance items that sometimes just go overlooked as well when the roads are magically clear of snow. Greatly appreciate your leadership in this position, and I wish you and your family the best.
I would echo those sentiments, and that obviously came out in the meeting we had with Delaware County because they said there is very little chance they would have anybody that would be willing to take on the task that Anthony took on with the two counties. So that's kind of why the twenty-eighty is going to go down, but they spoke very highly of Anthony, and I thank very highly of him myself.
Anthony, I echo their comments, and I will not put you through the DOT speech that I gave last summer. I'm sure you recall my effusive praise, so that got a little awkward, but all the same. So good luck to you, of course, and and as we were just mentioning, you'll be back before us again in the next few weeks and
Next, we go to our nine-thirty work session with Sheriff Kennedy discusses jail social worker position.
Supervisor, do you want to do public comments first?
I'm sorry.
No problem.
You have public comment. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person, which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and I will quote prohibits the board from deliberate deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? I have no one in chambers. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do not, but I would remind everybody that tomorrow is election day, so your polling places will be open at seven AM, open till eight PM, and I encourage everybody to get out and vote.
Thank you, Kevin. We get to move forward or?
I'm fine for one thing.
Get in. Okay. We'll go to the nine-thirty work session with Sheriff Kennedy to discuss the jail social worker position.
Come on up, Captain.
We also have May Inchen here from the region. Sheriff Kennedy, would she be needed here at the table with you? And and Cameron's here.
Whoever wishes to speak is welcome. But so we might call them. It might be easier if they just go to.
Okay.
Have an extra large spreadsheet or is that? There. Salary is going up, but I didn't think this big.
Alright. Thank you for meeting with us this morning. Just for some background, we had been discussing the possibility of having a social worker work in the jail since our jail psych nurse moved on last fall. She had been working with some of our inmates as well as Tina Williams from the Department of Corrections, who handles the mental health caseload for the the inmates. And they had been working together and trying to get people connected with services when they get out of jail with the goal of them not returning because they were getting treatment that they needed, because a lot of these people are getting arrested on low-level offenses. For example, we have a a woman that was that is in jail now for almost forty days on a being held on a crime that is the maximum sentence would be thirty days. But because of some issues, she's unable to get out because she's not deemed competent. So we have many situations like that. Mike, Captain Menster did a did a count for us the other day. We had twenty-eight people in our jail with brain health or significant brain health needs that are awaiting many different services to e- either connection services when they get out, they're waiting competency hearings while they're in, those type of things. So the brain health issue within the jail is is significant, and we've talked about that many times over here. So after the psych the psych nurse left last fall, and Cameron was instrumental in speaking with the mental health region about the possibility of helping us fund a social worker to permanently work inside the jail. We really weren't sure what that was going to look like. That's why it wasn't on our asks for the for the budget hearing. And we weren't sure what the funding, i- if any, was going to be from the region. So after we had kind of put in all of our asks, the mental health region made a decision and agreed to fund a a position fifty percent of, I guess, wages and benefits for us to have a social worker, somebody that actually works for the county, which is a little bit different than, I know we've been over here and talked about our law enforcement liaison position. That person actually works for Foundation Two. She's got an office at our department. She works with our with our deputies and stuff, but she actually is not a county employee. So, you know, there's things that that we can control with her position, but there's also things that, you know, it's controlled by Foundation Two. This position would be controlled by the by Dubuque County. She'd be a Dubuque County employee. He or she would be a Dubuque County employee. And so, given the fact that it was approved by the region after after our budget requests and everything, that's why we're coming to you now. We took some time after we found out about that approval to get some some things together to to bring to the board and ask them to consider funding this position going forward within the jail. We believe that if we can get someone to in a position like this, it will help serve the brain health needs of the the people of Dubuque County and also alleviate some of the jail population and keep hopefully get these people connected with services so that when they get out, they stop returning. So what you've been handed are a few different things. One is from the one to to whom it may concern. That is from our law enforcement liaison. That's just a brief description of what she does. She has actually, last week, she did go up and do some help us out in the jail with a few inmates, but her role is really to catch people on the outside and keep them from coming in. So it's it's not necessarily dedicated to to working up in the jail twenty, you know, every day. So I know that's probably something that's going to be asked, or why she can't do that. Well, she's got her own caseload from the road, so.
I do have a question, but that's actually not it, Joe.
Okay.
So I just wanted to be clear, the social work position is not replacing the law enforcement liaison.
No.
And do you think that the law enforcement liaison position is working out for its intended purpose?
So far, we feel it's been going pretty well. I haven't heard any complaints from the deputies, and as Harley will be happy to tell you, if there was a problem, they'd be happy to tell us. So.
Out of shine group.
You know, no.
You would know shortly.
Yeah, right. So it's as far as we're concerned, I mean, it's a new program, so there's there's, you know, some hiccups along the way, but for the most part, I I mean, I feel like we're pretty happy with the result we're getting. The deputies seem to be happy with what's going on, and so and we feel like we're getting people help that they and connected with things that they need to be connected with. So you know, from that aspect, I think I feel it's going well. So.
So this position is a county position, and ECR is going to reimburse us half the that vice versa. I just wanted to clarify, it's going to be a county position, and ECR reimburses fifty percent.
The liaison funding will shift over time. That's a graduated scale of who pays what percentage. The social worker is fifty-fifty, and it is intended to remain fifty-fifty. Okay, so the funding on that will be consistent.
And also, just for reference, I had Tina Williams come from Department Corrections. She handles, right now handles a bunch of the brain health caseload with the jail through the jail diversion program. Tina, if you want to, do you want to come up to the podium and kind of explain your role in all this?
Good morning, supervisors. So as Sheriff Kennedy had explained, Gretchen, the liaison had come up into the jail last week to assist because once we last fall lost the individual that had been in the jail, the the psych nurse, I started kind of picking up a lot of what she had previously been doing. As the jail diversion coordinator, there are very specific parameters around the clientele that I that I can work with. It requires that they have diagnosed brain health disorder, that it's not primarily substance-induced, and that those individuals are going to be cooperative and and willing to participate in in ongoing brain health services. And the majority of the clients, I think that the twenty-eight, maybe the reference before, twenty-two of them have been on my list of individuals that I've been attempting to work with. Because right now, I and and I would maybe refer back to Captain Menster about this, but I believe that we are currently at a bit of an influx with this type of population in the jail. We always struggle with helping these individuals. I feel like it's why the region has funded my position to be working with them, but since we lost that psych nurse, it has really risen greatly over time. My role is to, you know, assess individuals in the jail, determine whether or not they could be safely released with services. I then often communicate with jail staff personally, service providers in the community personally, and then with the judges personally to request that their bond that's holding them in jail be amended with my recommendations of what services they would need to have those be enforced by pre-trial release. And in certain situations, those individuals would not qualify for the jail diversion program, but the bond could very well still be amended to release them safely to the community if they had supports and services in place that could otherwise be put in place by a, a, a social worker. And that falls outside the, the purview of what I'm able to do, especially with the, the high numbers that are in there now. I believe too, as the, the jail diversion coordinator, you know, it's, it's the difference of the, the pre-trial supervision piece. A lot of these individuals are there on very low-level cases, public intoxes and things like that, that wouldn't necessarily qualify for pre-trial supervision if they had somebody that while they were in the jail could, you know, figure out what exactly was maybe going on. If it was their first arrest and they are displaying behaviors that, that show that they couldn't be safe in the community if they were released, that, you know, that individual would be able to work with that person, get those services in the community, but they wouldn't necessarily be working with the jail diversion coordinator.
Sorry, you're, you're very hard, you're very hard to get.
Okay.
Just get a little closer to the microphone.
I'm, I'm really sorry.
You've submitted a written report. We just got it this morning though, so not had a chance to look at that. Do you know why we lost the psych nurse?
I think, didn't she finish her NP or something like that? And she moved on from Hillcrest?
She's still at Hillcrest, however, she's a nurse practitioner now, which took her out of this, her nurse classification.
Paying for the psych nurse, right? The county was?
The mental health region was paying for the psych nurse.
ECR was paying for the psych nurse, right? Is that what we're saying?
Do we want a psych nurse back?
You know, personally, I think that this would probably be a better option for us in that the psych nurse, although she did a good job, she was a Hillcrest employee and.
I'm not asking you either or, Joe. I'm saying, do we need to pursue a psych nurse as well?
I, I think honestly, if we had a 40-hour social worker up there, I, I think that would, that would be just as good as having the psych nurse up there. Because the psych nurse was only, we had her for, started off 16 hours and then starting July 1st last year, she bumped up to 20 hours and then she left in November. So, you know, I think the benefit that we got from her is kind of what led us to believe that having a social worker up there. Because, you know, social workers like, you know, Gretchen, when she's gone up to the jail, the few times that she's gone up, I mean, she's been able to, to kind of mitigate issues and talk people down a little bit and, and deal with their, with their crisis, crises at, at the time. And so, you know, she's had the ability to do that. And I think, and she's a social worker, given the fact that she's been able to, to operate in that way. I think that having a social worker up there for 40 hours a week would be, probably be a better way to go than to have.
I just wonder if there's things a psych nurse can do that a social worker can't. Psych nurses, I'm kind of looking at May Hinchin, they don't prescribe anything, a psych nurse doesn't. They're not involved in medications, right?
If I could speak on that, Joe. We were learning that the nurse position was not working out all that well because we already have nursing on staff who already have, through advanced correctional healthcare, who already have the mental health aspect of it. And what we were experiencing with Emily, who was doing a great job with her, she's only connected to Hillcrest. And a lot of these people were slipping through the cracks because they weren't getting into any of the other community programs that are available because she's not connected directly to them. So a social worker that is open to everyone in the community and, I mean, even within our region will open the doors dramatically. I mean, and one, just one nurse could be doing. And not to mention a social work background, you know, as you may directly involved in the humanity of, of people and getting.
The Dubuque Police Department using social workers, are they not?
I have no, I have not heard that. And I guess as far as whether we wanted to do this and the psych nurse, I guess you'd probably have to talk, refer that question to May on whether or not they were still consider funding the psych nurse in addition. For, for me personally, I think I would like to go this, this route and see where it takes us and, you know, hopefully that this would be partially the answer. I mean, granted, some of these, some of these individuals were not going to get help for. We've had some of these individuals up to, to North many times. They've been deemed, you know.
Well, as far as they're concerned, however, they shouldn't be released to the public.
Right. But some of them have also been, been deemed untreatable. And so those people were, were never going to be able to do enough to keep them from coming back. But if we can catch some of those people that are kind of in the middle, you know, it, it'd be a better thing for the community than to keep locking them up. And many of the people, we watched them deteriorate while they're in, in jail. I mean, you know, because they, either they get victimized by the other inmates, they, they don't get along well with people, so then they end up in solitary confinement-type situations. And that is not good for them. But we have to do it for their safety and the safety of the other inmates. And so it's just, it's a kind of a compounding issue.
It's wonderful, Sheriff Kennedy, that you're looking at this very proactively and that you have your, you know, executive team here with you advocating to make a shift to respond to the inmates' needs. So I think that says a lot about leadership at the Dubuque County Jail. So we want to certainly, I think, I mean, I support getting the staff that you think you need to be more effective for them, to meet the needs of the inmates. So this is the way to proceed. And I know, Tina, you're overworked. We could use another jail diversion person. Shout out to ECR, sitting in the benches, that we could use more jail diversion people in Dubuque County as well, so.
Yeah, thank you very much for, for your comments. Captain Minister and staff work very hard. They have a difficult job dealing with these people on a daily basis. So I, the commendations go to them and their ability to, to manage the situations. As you see in front of you, we have a wage scale and essentially, one of the things that we, in dealing, and I'm, I'm in no way trying to call out Hillcrest. This has just been a general observation. In, in what social work often pays, you know, we, we felt that that was a critical piece in why there's so much movement within that particular field. And so we decided that we were just going to put them at a rate that was consistent with what, what our corrections officers get paid, which would be a fairly decent wage for someone in the social work field, but also I think a, a reasonable ask from both the county and the region. They would just follow our standard three-year step program, the, the five-step, three-year program. And we only have them, I had HR, they calculated the current rate. Obviously, you know, we haven't signed a contract with the deputies' union yet, so I, I don't know what the new rate will be starting July 1st. But this is what the current rate would look like over that five steps.
I think you'll get applicants with this pay scale.
Well, that's what we hope. We, we want to be able, we hope with this pay scale that not only do we get applicants, that we get the best applicants and.
You get the best of the best.
That's, that's what we're hoping for.
And in our social work job description here, we're asking for at least two years' experience too. Have a rookie coming in that has no experience with any of the programming. I mean, that would.
How would they do that even, Mike? You know, I mean, yeah.
You have to be Tina, doing a little bit of training maybe, or? Like, I know she probably won't want to, but somebody that we come in here with some experience would be helpful.
A couple of questions, so, you know, we're talking about the wage scales, maybe I'll jumpstart there. Has the region agreed to this wage scale?
I talked to Ann about it, I guess.
Is there, we have, we're talking about 50%, is that?
Right.
Like the whole numbers.
As far as the wage scale, so just, I guess.
You've seen the wage, wage scale?
And then maybe the secondary question with that would be, are there any other counties in our region that are doing this? I think it's a.
And this is a work session, so.
Well, probably should come up, you know. All right, we have a, we have an extra mic.
Come up, May, that we can hear.
Good morning.
A little context to this too. You know, as a, as a region, we have a plan and one of our goals. And so as part of our, you know, commitment to those partnerships, I've also been in discussion with Johnson County. So just a little regional concept. Johnson County, around the same time that Sheriff Kennedy and Captain Minster were, had lost the psych nurse and were identifying a need, so had Johnson County. So we ended up, and I'm sorry that the region's budget process follows the county's budget process, that's the way it is. So I asked the Regional Governing Board to approve for us to fund 50% of the wage for a jail social worker in our three largest counties. Johnson County is in the process right now of hiring. They've done interviews. You are discussing the option here for Dubuque County today. Lynn County politely declined because they have some grants that are funding a very similar position. So they don't need it right now. So that's a little bit of the regional context. So I, I bring that up because in that context, these salaries are, the, the step, steps one to three are in line with what Johnson County approved.
Pay scale is good.
Good, yeah, that answered my question. I think that's, that's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that we don't necessarily have to be the pilot. They've got other counties that also involve.
Johnson County is about a step ahead because they've done interviews already.
Johnson County's pay scale, I think, would be considered probably pretty good for Dubuque County. So that's great. We should, I think, have some good applications from this, a good applicants. Did you have anything to add, May, now that you're at a microphone about the psych nurse? I think that was funded by our Fund Balance project in part.
It was funded by Fund Balance, but then, it's been about a year and a half ago, and the Regional Governing Board decided just to fund it if counties wanted it. So the, the option is there. I tend to agree with Sheriff Kennedy that 16 or 20 hours a week of a, of a jail nurse is probably being taken care of with their contract with advanced correctional healthcare, right? It's probably, that need is probably being taken care of. And the real need is more like what Tina talked about. There are people that could be used for this service that aren't eligible for her caseload. And the other reason that the region offered 50%, as you know, that our services have to be limited to people who have brain health disorders. There are, and Tina brought it up, people who use the jail who have substance use disorders. And we can't pay for that with regional funds. So that was one of the reasons for the 50/50 split. There are people who wouldn't ever maybe be eligible for regional funding. So that's then going to be through the sheriff's budget, that 50%. The, and I'm, I'm not really interested in keeping the data to make sure that it's an exact 50/50%. I'm sure that that's probably going to be the fallout. So that's the reason that we did the 50/50.
It shows the compliance with the law, with the code, where we can interchange those funds.
Yeah, and, and I think when you consider the, the number of people that, you know, that have comorbid behaviors of brain health and substance abuse, you know, this will give us a better opportunity to manage those situations.
It would be generally in support of it, so I think it's a needed position.
Yeah, I, I love, definitely like how this position would be connecting to outside agencies because we have been involved with Hillcrest, on the view of Liberty Recovery Center, a variety of others. You probably know that Supervisors have both funded and fully supported. So it'd be good to have our full-time employees engaged with them as well. Great idea.
Is the position going to be July 1st?
I guess that depends if you approve it today.
Our budget director is not with us today.
We'll need a personnel requisition, right?
Yeah.
Next week.
So, yeah, I mean, it, it depends when you approve it. We, once you approve it, we'll get it out as quickly as possible. You know, I assume since the person's working in the jail, they're probably going to have to go through our standard background check, which is fairly significant. So I would say if we, if we put out for applications next Monday, it'd be reasonable to say that the person would be in the door by mid-August.
Well, I strongly favor this. I appreciate you, as I've already said, bringing this forward. This is good work. And I, I also shout out to our disabilities and mental health coordinator, Dr. Ann Cameron-Williams. You mentioned that she's been helping you get through the steps to get this done as well.
Yeah, she's, she's been instrumental in making this happen. So between her and, and May, you know, thank you very much for the work that you guys have put in to, in the background. Actually made it very easy for us to, to come in here and, and make the ask. They, they did all the work. We just, you know, kind of carried it across the finish line, I guess. So thanks to them.
Well, Mike, it is, it's about how you want to treat your fellow human beings, so well done.
And Supervisors, if timing is critical, we could also add the personnel requisition to our pop-up meeting on Wednesday as well. Buy a couple, you know, get you a couple of extra days. Get you a little bit closer. If it's critical, we can put that on this week still.
That's entirely up to the board.
Have a problem with the timing issue?
Well, we don't have our budget director. Could be a new budget item for our share of the employee expense.
And I, honestly, if we, if we need to wait for Stella, I think she's on vacation or something this week.
A national training.
Okay.
I don't need to, I'm pretty confident that this will work.
Okay.
And you're on agenda for this.
Appreciate the 50%, that's very helpful. Thank you, May.
Sounds good. We'll get that personnel requisition over today, so it can make the, make the agenda.
Thanks, Joe.
You guys.
Dave, Mike, thanks, May.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Liam.
Great work.
Thanks.
Everybody good to keep going?
Good, good. I know a break's coming up.
Hey, we have a 9:50 work session with ECIA representatives, presentation on the former, former Flex Deal site.
Welcome. Guys received the full plan. I sent it out a while ago, so.
That was, I think we had the slide deck of 16 pages.
Okay, so that's the full thing.
And I may have seen this conservation, I can't remember.
You will still need to room size your voice, even though you're sitting very close to the microphone.
I sure will. So the DCCB Flex Deal Plan. Yep, okay. So I'm Christopher Westlin with ECIA, I'm a planner.
Don Danielson with ECIA, Brownfield's project manager.
You getting or hear you again? Zoom, Zoom, I think was our previous last four or five times.
So the DCCB Dubuque County Conservation Board Flex Deal Plan, Brownfield Plan, is a part of that larger Flex Deal at Large Plan, which will be presented eventually. But this is just for the parcel that was, that will. Um, but this is just for the parcel that was, that will maybe be donated from Flex Steel to Dubuque County. So that's the assumption that we made, um, for this plan is that that fifteen acres about, um, parcel will be of the total forty plus, um, will be donated by Flex Steel to Dubuque County Conservation Board. Um, so these are just the recommendations that, uh, we, and Blackstone mostly, um, came up with in regards to this. So, um, if we could, yep. Right on.
Can I ask you, I don't know Blackstone Environmental, can you give me context for who is that?
Blackstone Environmental is a consult, is a, a consulting agency that deal, that basically did most of the testing, testing on the Flex Steel site.
Environmental assessment work. They completed.
Is this going to be paid for then by the Brownfields grants?
Yes. Um, well, so the assessment work that has been conducted out at the site has been ongoing for numerous years. Some of it was paid for by Flex Steel. They're part of the land recycle program with Iowa DNR. So they're kind of working with the Iowa DNR to determine the contamination at the site. So they've paid for a lot of that ongoing themselves. Um, some of it then has been paid by the Iowa DNR, uh, Brownfield Program and then some also by the ECIA Brownfield Program.
Good.
So, um, so Emily Smart and, um, was the consultant from, uh, Blackstone. I don't believe she, she's not with us today. Um, but they did a lot of the, so the environmental assessment work and then for this portion of the, this total at-large site, um, they did a little bit more of the planning and we're just kind of go through, uh, kind of their findings today. So, um, so the site overview, the key components of this plan, um, that we really just wanted to highlight were the Heritage Trail, the wetland accessible area, which is, you can see kind of the north there on the map, the fence relocation, trail realignment, and then parking, um, down by East Thirty Second and Peru. So, uh, these are the important portions of the plan that we really wanted to highlight here today. So trail safety, um, so to kind of just better, uh, show you guys where we're at and what, what the issues are, um, currently regarding the, uh, safety is that, so right now, a lot of people are having issues with the fence, um, at, uh, along Heritage Trail. Um, I believe the Dubuque County Conservation Board in recent months is, has been working to find a solution to this. A lot of people have been running into it or, um, biking into it. Um, so they were looking to move it six feet away from the trail or, um, remove it altogether. And I, and I believe, so Brian's on here, but I believe, uh, he may have some more up-to-date information on that. Um, and then the really big issue, uh, that I found even as I live in the area is with the street crossing um, of East Thirty Second and, um, on Peru Road, um, going from the county to the city, uh, portion of the trail. Um, there's about thirty-five feet linear offset, um, that you can kind of see there, um, between the trail on the, on the city side to the county side. Um, and, and of course, it's also basically unmarked. And so there's, there's a lot of safety issues. I couldn't imagine if I was now with a kid or something, it would be very difficult um, to, to bike across there. Um, so one of the, uh, recommendations that, uh, Blackstone and ECIA had kind of made was that, um, a tunnel, um, like the one that's used for the Heritage Trail pass under, um, uh, that's along, uh, John Deere, uh, for East Thirty Second and Peru Road. So that was, that was one thing and kind of see a picture of that. And then before we get into kind of the more of the meat of the recommendations, um, I want to kind of talk about kind of the timeline of where this project has been at and, you know, where it is hoping to be. Um, so we started this project, uh, back in, uh, seven nine twenty-one and then, um, we held focus group meetings and public meetings. And the, and we had the phase one completed, um, at the end in September. And then, uh, a few months ago, we got the soil and groundwater management plan, uh, cleanup plan draft also completed. And then the site reuse plan, um, was presented to DCCB, um, and then now of course the county. Um, and then the dates that are to be determined would be, um, well, the actual implementation aspect of this. And then an official, you know, land sale from Flex Steel. So to kind of talk about the public input end of this, um, we had two focus group meetings and then one general public input meeting. Um, for all of these, anyone could come to these, um, but we did just, um, the focus group meetings. Um, so the first one was held at Fillmore Golf Course in Cascade. Um, and the second one was held at Swiss Valley and Casta, and then the last one was held at the UAW Hall in Dubuque. Um, so these were just kind of good to kind of get, um, feedback in regards to, you know, how, how are we going to move forward with this? And for brownfield planning, uh, the community aspect, uh, planning aspect, uh, and feedback aspect is, is really important and critical for these. And so the key takeaway is that we got from what people mentioned there where that they, they would, number one, like to maintain and enhance the wetlands and the wildlife. Um, so the parcel that we're talking about, the fifteen acre parcel, um, has kind of a wetlands area and it's really, it's really quite nice. Um, it has very unique ecology. So, um, people really want to see that, um, expanded and enhanced, um, if possible. Because right now, you, when you go by it, you can't really quite see it off the trail. So it's really isn't a feature. It's just kind of, it's there right now. The things to, that people wanted to address and improve. So like I said before, the trail, um, the fence, the wetland and the parking, there is of course no, no parking really there. Um, and then that improved crossing at East Thirty Second and Peru. Um, and then the guiding vision that people told us they want, you know, is focus on that wetland area. And people wanted us to explore some additional funding sources to make these improvements happen. So, the guiding vision that, uh, Blackstone ECIA kind of determined when we're, uh, regarding these reuse plan recommendations was that, you know, the Heritage Trail and the wetland area will offer the public easier access, convenient parking, enhanced focus on the habitat. So, uh, here's another image of that thirty-five foot linear offset, um, that you can kind of see. And then the maintaining enhancing aspects, those we've just covered. So go ahead. Um, so, um, other things that we'd like to, you know, address and improve, uh, was also, you know, controlling and removing snow excess, uh, excess vegetation invasive species along Heritage Trail. Like I had mentioned before, you can't really see, um, the wetland area very much from the trail. Um, and then also constructing observation platform area for the wildlife viewing at that wetland area. And we have some pictures that we kind of show you, um, of what that looks like. And then more specific opportunities to, uh, explore was the funding sources again. Remove any concrete vegetation fencing that is too close to the Heritage Trail, um, to improve site distance. And then of course the platform area for the educational purposes. So we'll get into the design concepts, uh, that Blackstone, um, created. We won't take any credit. Blackstone made these. So the proposed Heritage Trail relocation, um, you can kind of see here that, uh, that thirty-five, the offset has been corrected. And now there's a parking lot, um, a small parking lot by that utility station, um, that, uh, you could kind of see in the, in that first picture um, of the, the site to orient you, um, in that first slide. So, uh, this would kind of, this would improve, uh, the flow of this area and then also, you know, giving a parking area, um, which would, um, really, really help, uh, for access, um, for people who want to, you know, start at the beginning of the trail there.
So beyond the realignment of the trail, uh, we discussed the wetland section, uh, of expanding that area and adding an actual walk path trail through the wetland area. And then with the wetlands, um, uh, walk path, there could be some outlooks. Um, and I gotta, uh, give a shout out to Corinne, um, trial from Waller High School. The students up there did an awesome presentation with some of their recommendations. And I believe one of the student's name was Nolan, um, and I might chop up his last name, Martinet. Um, and he presented the portion in regards to the wetlands and had some really nice ideas in regards to adding mallard and duck, um, homes along the trail, um, some, um, outlooks as well and taking and doing, we have our, the trail designed differently, kind of doing a in between the trees and then cutting on the one side. And he actually went around the whole, uh, wetland area and then had, um, placards and um, identification markers in regards to the, to the, um, wetland area, identify different aspects and came up with some ideas in regards to trees that can be planted along the wetland area to enhance the areas. He's, um, a Waller High School student, a senior. So I'm not sure his age, um, but it was part of the environmental science class program that they did. And they did a presentation here in May to Blackstone, the community and such, um, as part of their pro, their senior project with that class. So. Well, you'll have to talk to him. I, I'm not sure about that, but, but, um, yeah, it was really an awesome presentation that they presented.
Certainly part of our target audience.
Yes, yeah. Well, and it was great to hear the students', um, their thoughts for the site of what would be great there at the Flex Steel site and how it could be enhanced. And I really thought they had some awesome ideas besides the wetland and the enhancement to the park. They spoke about solar and community gardens and a lot of other things that could be incorporated in the whole entire Flex Steel site. So, again, got to commend the students on their efforts for that. So. Yeah, yeah. So, um, we had, um, also besides the wet, the, um, outlooks, we had some pavilion ideas, uh, that could be incorporated along the trail or like maybe like a picnic area that could be part of the trail as well. And with Flex Steel, if anybody knows, there was a lot of material that was saved, um, that Kyle Fitzgerald was able to, um, basically retain and, uh, he has set aside some wood that could, timber that could be actually used to build either pavilion or an outlook or something, or even be utilized for the placards. So he did give an estimate to, to Dubuque County Conservation Board for, um, sell some of that material if they wanted to incorporate that into like a grant or any funding source, um, down the road. Once they start getting into the more detailed portion of, uh, developing that area. So, um, moving on to beyond the wetlands, uh, there's an example even of a placard with using timber and then having the placard on top. And then it could be utilized to describe like the wildlife in that area, the flowers, the natural habitats. There's some, you know, neat, uh, I think, things about that particular area. So, uh, it'd be nice to have that kind of tutorial for people walking the trail along the wetland area. Moving on, kind of the next steps beyond the planning process, uh, we talk about the environmental site assessment. I just wanted to let everybody know that that's still ongoing out there at the site. The portion that the county is looking at receiving for the most part is pretty clean. I mean, you have the wetlands area, which kind of helps to the way that is to filter out some of the, the contamination. Uh, so there's things you can do and add out there in that area too, to help the ground soil. The part that is probably, uh, the section that maybe we don't, they don't know exactly, um, what the contamination level is, is the portion where the realignment would be of, of the trail. So what Blackstone is doing is working with ECIA and with our environmental, uh, assessment grant. And we're going to do a potential, we're looking at doing a phase two, um, on that section of the trail. We have come up with a sampling plan, which we have given to the Iowa DNR and had gotten their approval on and also have given it to EPA for their approval. And it would take the hundred and twenty feet long section that would be the trail realignment. And it would test along that section, so many feet down to determine the death of any potential contamination. It would take out this, the soil and it would test for like six or seven different contaminants. Um, one of them would be like metals, petroleum, um, volatile, uh, organic compounds um, within that area and see if anything additional needs to be done in order to kind of clean up that section of the trail if there isn't a contamination above state standards. So first get determined if that level is above state standards and then if so, how would be best to clean up that area? So, uh, and like I mentioned before, Flex Steel is in the land recycle program voluntarily. So they've been working with the Iowa DNR and we're kind of assisting Blackstone and, uh, them in regards to that oversight for the assessment work in that section of the trail. So that's kind of good for the county to know before you acquire a site, you know, if there isn't contamination, what level? And if, if it can be cleaned up, you know, what needs to be done. So.
Second time today, we had discussions about acquiring sites that might have contamination. A Key West shop too.
Yeah, I always would say, being the Brownfield Project Manager, know before you acquire. So the ECIA Brownfield Program offers phase ones prior to purchasing a site or acquiring a site, um, through that grant program that, uh, phase one could be ordered for the county, city or nonprofit. So, you know, just keeping that in mind. So with this section of the trail, phase one is technically only good for six months. ECIA did do a phase one already on the section of trail. It's taken a little bit longer than anticipated to complete the transaction or finalize the transaction with Flex Steel in the county. So I would recommend that an updated phase one be completed prior to, even though it's going to the county, there's still some liability potential. So you always want to make sure that you have that phase one to kind of reduce your liability um, down the road. So that would be a thought. And usually you can get a phase one done for less than twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars.
I would think that the, uh, section that you're looking at for contamination now would be low probability. I mean, given location, unless something would happen when the railroad is there. Hopefully it would come back clean.
Yeah.
Problems, but definitely do need to get a check before you want to take it over.
Yeah. And one of the ideas is if there is some contamination is, then we could potentially do what's called a soil and groundwater management plan and actually would look at like removal of that contaminated soil permanently and then filling it with clean soil, basically. It is, it is not cheap. So, yeah, it would have to be, you know, determine how deep the depth of the contamination if there is.
You'll be doing all those things with the Conservation Board, correct?
Yes, yeah.
I've heard this multiple times, so I appreciate, uh, hearing it again and thank you for your work. Thank you for your work.
When will be our next report and what are the next steps?
Well, the next step is, like I said, kind of working on the environmental assessment with East, with, um, Blackstone and EPA and Iowa DNR. And we'll, we'll work on completing that. Probably I would say if Flex Steel is in agreement, um, that would should be complete within the next sixty days, which would be nice. And then, um, I know Dubuque County Conservation Board, and Brian can speak to this, is in conversation with Flex Steel as far as the donation goes. Not sure what the timeline is on that, um, for completion of that. But I know once that that is completed, the hope is then to work on the trail, the wetland area, and then the realignment. So, and Brian, if Brian's on there, if he wants to jump in at all, I don't know if he's.
Oh, good morning, Brian.
Morning. So, uh, kind of the timeline is, it's not moving very fast, but I don't think on something like this, we want to move real fast. We want to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is and make sure we're not taking any extra liability on for the county. With that being said, I think one of the issues is a pumping station, uh, that's used for stormwater control in the wetland area and the city of Dubuque, Dubuque County and Flex Steel are all parties to that agreement. And there's been discussions on who's going to take that over, uh, the management of that area. So far, the county has not been in the discussions and I think it would be wise for the county to be in on those discussions, uh, or designate somebody to be in that, um, really pumping station. Really pumping stations and storm waters really not in our department's wheelhouse. But I think with the county being in that agreement, we should have some representation in that discussion.
So what can we do to be helpful to you with that, Brian? Do you need to? Expert or what do you think?
I'm not sure who would be the best to whether it be the county engineer or maybe Ed or somebody representing the board of supervisors. I'm not sure, but it'll be up to your discussion, but I think having somebody available to to be involved in those discussions would be valuable.
I mean, one point I'll jump in, Brian, and you can add context if I'm off a hair, but you know, this, this whole process was not originated from the conservation board. And so Flex still owns the site, they're a private company. Someone else contracted ECIA and the other consulting firms and did this great work. But I don't want or supervisors in the public to think that this was, we didn't contract everyone to do this, nor did we pay for for these services. Is that correct, Brian?
That's correct. We, we were contacted by Fox Steel. And in ECIA, we did get a grant for ECI to do the brownfield work for on behalf of the conservation board.
Okay. So to an essence, we did contract them, but the funding didn't come from, from our general fund.
Correct, yes.
Is the conservation board interested in this project, Jay?
You know, I think we are interested, but but you know, it's not like we have gone out and, you know, yes, this is what we want to do. And so we've heard from the public and we served the public. And so you and we have very smart people involved with, hey, should we, you know, correct this alignment and known about the fence for quite a while. And then certainly this is all about the watershed and the wetland, which is wonderful. Conservation's got a lot of parks, a lot of projects. I wouldn't say this is at the top of the list because it's got some complexities. So, you know, I think our role from the supervisors' levels would to be, you know, to learn and understand. So I'm glad we're here. But I don't want the board to think that this is something the conservation board is, you know, knocking down anyone's door to say, let's get this done. We should, we should move cautiously and related to the pumping station, I don't feel or think today, we should jump in and say, we're going to run and own that. So it has been a cooperative agreement and, you know, we still can be there as one of the cooperative partners. So maybe just a little context. And so, you know, this is good, deep. The whole brownfield components of all the contamination is bad and deep. And, you know, we need to understand what those risks, risks and benefits before the county assumes that land.
I appreciate that very much. And I'm glad to hear you giving us some greater context and also sitting in the supervisor chair helps inform me about where, where we are as well. If this needs a supervisor to do, I mean, Brian suggesting there might be some role for us to play, maybe even just listening. Is that something you want to do? Or do you think that's premature?
I'm certainly happy to, to, to play that role. Brian has been active, working with various staffs and in your, your part, when I point to you, so, you know, certainly Blackstone and the study and ECA is coming to an end, right? And so you're going through your good work and meeting with the supervisors. And I saw the May timeframe, so your, your project's about ready to be wrapped up. And so then it will be Flex deal, the city and the county saying, what do you want to do? And so that's, that's coming up upon us. And I don't know the answer to that, other than I know I don't want to jump and make any decisions today. You know, because for example, on the alignment, you know, I think it went from an idea to this, you know, we've got pictures of this tunnel and you know, it's pretty, pretty unique drawings that will cost hundreds of thousands, if not millions. There's no funding that comes with that. And nor is that a priority at the conservation board. It's one of the items we know of many on the Heritage Trail that need work.
It was an idea that's presented.
Exactly.
Options for the future.
Yeah. But I would propose with, you know, Brian, I don't know if you're looking to try to hand this off as you're looking for help. Is that what I hear as far as the kind of the, the stormwater pump and other components of this?
I, I just think it's not in my realm of knowledge about pumping stations. I, I've never even seen one. But I know it exists. But I, I think it's it would be more of a board of supervisors role with that agreement. I mean, they're the ones that originally signed the agreement with the city and Flex deal to split that in thirds there. I'm more than willing to, to meet with them and discuss it, but I think it would be something that the board of supervisors have to decide on.
I think whenever you're ready to kind of present that agreement to us in a work session, if you feel it needs, we're, I'm sure the board would be willing to listen and see how we can help.
I, I'm taking very much to heart, though, what Jay is saying, which is if it's not a priority project for the conservation board. I appreciate that you need to be informed and aware that I'm not interested in hiring expertise to pursue the pump and such. Unless we need to, you know, I, I, it sounds a little bit like we're in a position maybe we didn't intend to be in.
So two things. So this is the whole study and the pump has nothing to do with your study. So, so Brian brought up, hey, you might be aware of this pump as well. So the pump is another separate agreement. I don't know if it's officially on the Flex Hill property. But there's kind of, hey, we've done our work and if you want to move forward to work with Flex deal, here it is. The pump is another separate agreement, independent of this, that will need to be that, that the other parties are asking for some type of resolution too.
I need more information on the pump, I guess.
I don't want to get an email from the city saying they're ready to post signs on May twenty third. And have me, well, we don't, we don't have any knowledge about the pump and so forth. So.
Brian, maybe a work session on that, that pump and that agreement and having that twenty eighteen agreement in front of the board would be helpful. I haven't researched or done anything either. You know, it's fine from our vantage point. See, the other parties are trying to get rid of it. They're trying to ask the county for more responsibility, which would be my words. And so we probably just need to talk about it.
So one thing I would like to stress, though, I think a lot of these concepts in this plan are really valuable. I think that these are great improvements to the Heritage Trail. And I think the, you know, the wetland would be a great educational tool on that end of town to reach a different audience than, than you know, we would have out here at Swiss Valley or EB line. So I think it's valuable. I, I really think there's some neat great things in this, this plan. And, you know, a lot of safety things too with the fencing, which is has long been a problem, the realignment of the road and, and at least marking and getting better signage and safer crossing there. I think it's all great and we can absolutely go for outside funding for a lot of these things. So. Hopefully we can work out all the details and move forward with this project. But I, I do think there are a lot of great things that would be good for the community.
Okay. I'd have to get a little more information on the pump issue that just, I guess, I had seen the pictures of it and that, but I'm just curious as to why and how or the purpose of it. So.
It's, it's a stormwater pump. So it, when the area floods, it pumps the stormwater out of the, the area. So.
It's pumping it too, though.
What's that?
Or is it pumping it too?
I'm not sure.
We agree we have a work session on it in the future. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your work.
Getting ready for recess till ten forty five.
Second.
All right.
A motion to second recess until ten forty five. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in recess till ten forty five. We call the board of supervisors back into session. We move to our ten forty five work session for ARP presentation by Four Mounds and Steeple Square.
Good morning. My name is Becky Bodish, representing Four Mounds today. I serve as program manager. For the purpose of this presentation, we're going to focus on the second page. The first page of the handout has just a brief overview of all of our programs. And the second page focuses more on who we're serving and how the space that we're asking for will be utilized. So as you can see, the demographics above, we're serving the underserved populations in Dubuque County. And how the classroom space will be utilized at Four Mounds is listed in the midsection of the paper. So in our construction programs, we serve up to eighteen students per year. This is actually looking like it's going to be more. We have a lot of interest in the fall, so much so that we're going to potentially have to add another job coach. Or I'm sorry, for youth heart, for construction, it's twenty four students per year. That is looking like it's going to be more. For our cabinetry program, we serve fifteen students per year in that program. We've had to turn students away because we don't have the space for more than five at a time in our woodshop. We are starting home modifications, aging in place grant with the city. And we will serve six students per year through that program. And that will be our students working with the job coach doing home accessibility for local seniors, income qualifying seniors to help them age safely in place. And our transitional employment pathway at Four Mounds is up to eight students per year. So all students in these programs would utilize the classroom space for team building, soft skills training, financial literacy, some of the more advanced programs, cabinetry, and students on the transitional pathway would use it for CNC training, CAD software design and things of that nature. Now that our programs are back in full force, when all of our programs are running at the same time, we're serving twenty five to thirty five individuals per week. When I say serving these individuals, we're not just serving them. These are students who are receiving soft skills training, mentor support to overcome barriers that have prevented them from, from becoming successfully employed in the past or staying employed. They're also receiving hard skills and certificates from NACC. As far as the community goes, the classroom space would also be utilized for adventure day campers, two hundred and fifteen students a summer and up to seventy five individuals for training, for volunteers on our site, as well as up to three hundred students per year that come for. as well as up to 300 students per year that come for field trips from local schools in the community. So that is how the space will be utilized. And you can see in the handout as well, the outcomes, what we're doing is working. And we've had a lot of support from the community, from private donors, and from the city in the first phases of this project. We're asking for your support in Phase Two. Do you have any questions?
So the initially I had asked if the city would be interested in funding or a partnership with the building. And I think the answer I got was no, correct?
Correct. The city has helped with the accessibility getting to the building. They're helping with they helped with the road project, our parking project. So we've expanded parking at Four Mounds in preparation for this, as well as accessible sidewalks and water lines. So they're helping us with that.
I understand that, but it is city property, correct?
Yes.
The city doesn't help me build stuff down at Swiss Valley Park. Kind of the way I'm leading towards this. I really liked Four Mounds. I wanted the city to help with this building because it is their property. That's, that was kind of the problem I've had with them.
I understand. They have provided substantial support in other ways, which are listed to help us keep our programs running. And they are our longest and most substantial supporter for our programs.
I just went for the public. I think it's important to note that the things that you list here are I'm not trying to minimize the city, but a lot of it's a REAP program. So it's, it's, the city is not necessarily making things happen from their budget. You're not asking us to do that either. These are federal funds. So, you know, kind of levels the playground with that. You're asking us to contribute to the building of a classroom and restrooms, correct? You need a building to house all of this inside of.
Yes. And previously, there was a lot of emphasis placed on the restrooms. It'll be a building, a classroom space that'll be utilized in the ways that I had listed here. But it will have restrooms that are also available to public.
Because what you've told us is all of this work is being done right now in porta potties.
Yes.
I mean, I've certainly been to Four Mounds and I guess I must have been at one of the buildings because I don't recall going out to the porta potty and I would remember that, so.
Right. Yep. And the buildings aren't accessible to just anyone who comes to the site or to our students.
Right. It, I mean, to me, and then I'm the person probably who's made the dramatic pause about the restrooms, but I find it highly unusual that you have program of this nature there without restroom facilities. You know, I didn't know you could just do porta potties year after year after year. I didn't even know that you could do that. You know, under the DNR code, I mean, all kinds of things. I didn't know you could have these kinds of amenities and open to the public in classrooms without that. So that was where I was just expressing surprise.
There is one restroom in the basement in the boiler room, which is serving as a classroom space for all of these, for all of the training that is taking place currently. But that can be a challenge when we have a house full of guests because the Enin Conference Center also helps support our programs. And so we need to be mindful of that.
Do you have a slide to show us the budget for this classroom facility? You're, you're asking for a half a million dollars from our federal funding?
Yes.
You, did you know how that breaks down? Ed's gonna find it for us. So, very good. And initially too, I wondered if it's not for programming, it's for construction. So it's to build a structure on a city city's property. That's, you know, the other, I understand that a nonprofit operates the programming, but this building will be owned by the city of Dubuque.
Yes.
I don't know who's the general contractor or who's the, you know, I mean, Becky, you don't build buildings. You build people.
Right.
You build futures. So I'm, I don't, I get, that's the whole thing. Like, well, what is this request about? It doesn't seem to do much of what you do and you do so well.
Right. We will have a general contractor, but it'll also be a great learning opportunity for our students. So we have students in our construction programs.
Probably good cabinets inside here.
Yes. They're making some pretty cool things.
Barriers to us in this, is this a problem for us in the sense that it's a building on the city property? Meanwhile, they try to find this.
My thing from the start is that. I, I, I think we're getting information here, but maybe to comment on your, your question related to, you know, city-county partnerships. So during my term, I've probably been the most sharp related to city-county partnerships, making sure that there, there's what I would consider fair and equitable. That said, the board, you know, we, Southwestern Terrell, we were partnering with that. And that ground is now owned by the city of Dubuque. And the county paid its fair share, 50% of the local match for that. And this board voted against it, agreed that the leftovers worth $350,000 would go to the city of Dubuque. We also partner with EB Lyons. That's owned by the city. We've got a 10-year maintenance agreement with that. That's going to cost well over a half million dollars. And I think it's a, and I voted for that. It's a good investment in the community. And then we're recently talking about the airport and potentially joint maintenance facilities, brand new build, that will be either on city property or on airport property, will be on the county's property. So there are quite a few projects we have. And then we, as you all know, happily or unhappily, we lease a lot of space from the city of Dubuque. So we are very tied to the city of Dubuque. And they are by far the largest single municipal partner and/or tax contributor to Dubuque County. So that all said, I think the agreement should be fair and equitable, and we should do the best to flush those details out. Related to this project, you know, I think it's along the lines of EB Lyons, along the lines of other partnerships that we've done, whether they be at, you know, Steeple Square, Dream Center, other various projects throughout the Dubuque County that are based on infrastructure. So, so I'm generally supportive and very interested. And I'll let you proceed maybe a little bit more with the details that were asked you related to the, the outdoor facility.
And we can do that, but Jay, you know, the, the airport shop is going to be a county building if it goes on the airport property, but it's going to be used by the county. So.
Airport. In the airport, they would have stalls and use for it. That was my understanding.
But it's airport property. It's not, well, technically city, but the airport owns the property.
Splitting hairs, but yes. Different group.
I guess I just, every one of those examples, we didn't build EB Lyons. So.
Built Southwest Terriol, that's the largest example, and significant funding. So that is clearly the largest example. And if you go to the parcel, you'll see that the county does not own that, by the way. The city of Dubuque is, is in charge.
Well, that's true, but I find this to be a very unusual request for a nonprofit to ask us to fund the building of a building that will be owned by the city of Dubuque. Just, I just didn't, like Supervisor Puff, I'm not gonna put words in your mouth. Those are lots of connections for me to try to make with all the requests that are, that are before us. So I obviously asked about your budget. I'm very interested, and this is a reminder. But that's, you know, that's hesitation I have. But how did we get here to this request? Is this, is this how the county should be working with nonprofits?
I understand. And in all fairness, it's a legitimate concern. Four Mounds does have a 99-year lease with the city. We do steward the property and the buildings. Buildings are maintained by our job coaches and our students. The grounds are maintained by our job coaches and students working within that area as well. The need is imminent. We did not expect the amount of growth that we've seen over the last two years, especially during COVID. And I guess if we were located anywhere else, we'd be asking for the same thing. The need still exists.
But is it your understanding under the lease that you're responsible for building the buildings?
We would be responsible for this because we're responsible for all programming.
I think maybe one of my, another perspective. It was only a very short time ago that this board authorized $5 million for the Field of Dreams. And that will be on a cooperative nonprofit with the city of Dubuque and others. That's brand new. You know, that was corn. Some of it probably is corn today that will be built. So, you know, my words, I don't feel bad about your request. I see it very similar to a lot of other requests. 500,000, not 5 million. And you won't have, you know, 8,000 people in one day and be on national TV. But I think the, the use of the classroom and the public participation and availability of the classroom that you've demonstrated certainly has public use. But those are my, my comments. And I apologize for interrupting. I'll let you proceed.
Thank you. Well, I would just emphasize that students being served aren't just students walking through our door and participating short term. These are students that are being given hope, given a future, learning to define their potential, and being placed into employment.
Do you know how much of this we need to fund of the building?
500,000.
Or it doesn't go? It's not going to happen without a gift of $5,000, of $500,000?
We will continue our work. We're always looking for funding opportunities. We're always writing grants. We're always spreading the word. So if it weren't fully funded, we would look for two other options.
Going 462,000 for the outdoor restroom and classroom. Future planning, next phase is the woodshop expansion is 38,000. So when would that be taking place?
Within the next two or three years. We're planning that right now. We're working with planners.
Right. So in order to get the building, you're looking for 462,000.
Yes.
Further questions?
I don't have any more questions.
Jay, anything further?
I do not have anything further. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the time and consideration that goes into making these decisions. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Judy Wolf, representing Steeple Square. And our project really focuses in a nutshell on workforce development, helping to provide workforce solutions, and at the same time, providing opportunities for underrepresented populations. So the vocational training that has been and will be provided at Steeple Square is serving individuals coming out of incarceration, those trying to overcome generational poverty, individuals dealing with brain health issues, and others who are working in low-income jobs and striving to work toward living wage jobs, many of them single parents. So in terms of students that we've trained to date, the number has been relatively low. You may remember our facility was just finished in late October when we launched our first culinary program a mere few days later. So there were only four students trained at that time. Our early childhood certificate program is just completing with 12 individuals enrolled. The cost of that for stipends, just as a benchmark, is $8,500 for that group. And they're one of the lower-paid stipend groups. There is a Childcare II class starting in, in, on August 2nd. And then obviously continuing to plan those. It, this is really critical. I'll say, we all know childcare workers don't start with what we consider a living wage. But there is a, you know, there is a sequence of training that can get them from that entry level job to higher level jobs, up to a director level and beyond. And also childcare workers are so critically needed. I mean, I kind of look upon the hospitality people we're training and the childcare people we're training kind of as a, you know, the bottom of that pyramid we need to build because we all know restaurants, hotels, childcare centers are begging for workers. They're in crisis. And we need to have people trained in some of those basic skills, again, to start them on their pathway to success, and also to provide the workforce solutions we need. I'll use Field of Dreams as an example, a great project. They're gonna need a lot of hospitality workers there. And they're gonna have the same challenges that, you know, all the places in Dubuque and the county are having in terms of finding people to fill those roles. So obviously, as I talked about before, there's other classes planned too, but the initial focus has been on childcare, culinary, and then hospitality and customer service type classes, which are being worked on now. So in terms of budget, we had asked for 500,000. I'll, I'll tell you the most critical need for us there is funding to complete our construction. We'd ask for 150,000 of what we needed for that. That number is now closer to 200,000 because of some expansion in the culinary kitchen and some ongoing costs we have because of delays in the estate processing tax credits. So we would like you, you know, if we could consider in that 150 to 200,000 range for construction in terms of the, the food, transportation, and childcare, we do have some other sources of funding for that. Obviously, it would be helpful, especially for that food part, where we're serving food, not just to participants in our programs, but for instance, for participants in the Four Mounds program, where we want to help address that food scarcity issues for, for those we partner with. And then finally, the stipends. I don't think that our stipends for the first year are going to be at that 200,000 level based on early enrollments. And I expect that that would probably be, you know, if you take the tuition part out, the, the actual stipend part at about 50,000 would be pretty accurate. So we understand difficulty in making decisions for full funding. But if we could ask for consideration of even half of that amount so that we could cover the, the construction costs and the expansion and construction we need, provide food for the participants, recognizing food scarcity as an issue for many, and having a portion of those stipends from county funding to assure that we'll be able to cover those during the initial year. The operational costs, I would be willing to forego. We are forming a legacy council now and are optimistic that we'll be able to get enough early participants in that to help with that sustainability piece. And we know that that will be longer term, a sustainability plan that we're confident will help us provide the support that's needed for the, for that vocational training that we'll be offering. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sorry, I kind of hurried through that, but Ed told me I had to.
Good morning, Judy. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
We have brought you back again together with Four Mounds. And I guess I just want to have you explain your relationship. Is your request for Four Mounds, we keep bringing you back together. Is, am I grouping you incorrectly?
I'd say you're grouping us incorrectly. The only portion of this project that relates to Four Mounds would be our hope to be able to provide food for people in various programs in nonprofits in the city because we hear from more than one of those that food scarcity is an issue for people in their programs. So since we have the kitchen there, it seemed logical for that to be a community resource to help some other nonprofits with, you know, providing food for people in their programs also. But other than that, it's totally independent.
That's excellent. Thank you for that clarification. So I'd like to talk then about what you do at Steeple Square, what Steeple Square does and not Four Mounds. Okay, so the construction, I thought that the culinary program construction is complete. You're saying it needs an expansion.
It, it does. And it's not the whole amount. And I thought I was clear about that when we talked before. Because of. Because of, um, added costs, we went ahead with the construction and ended up, because of increased costs, some of them related to delays in COVID and others. Because of cost increases post-COVID, uh, increased our costs from about 150 to now it's 200,000 actually. From what we had originally budgeted and thought would be sufficient for that project to be completed.
So you have a budget hole for the construction costs you've already spent?
Correct. A portion of it, about 25,000 is further that we need, but most of it is for what's already spent. Correct.
And then I'd like to know about the stipends. And I mean, I think I get tuition, right? Obviously you pay the fees for these individuals to attend the programming that's at Four Mounds, but it could be anywhere. It's just that you're paying the tuition for those folks.
Right. And the tuition that we're talking about here and the stipends are not for Four Mounds students. Those are for ones that are being trained at Staples Square. And the culinary childcare, it will be hospitality, um, customer service, and then some other areas beyond that as they expand the programming. And that is in cooperation with NICC.
Okay. And you do, does Staples Square have costs for tuition? Do you have expenses that Staples Square incurs for tuition?
No, we don't directly pay those, but we, what we agreed with, um, NICC as part of our partnership was to help raise funding for the stipends and tuition costs that would be incurred.
And then help me through an example of how the stipends work. You know, I'm a person and I'm going to be trained in childcare.
So the stipends vary by program. Currently, the childcare program is, um, the, the, the least amount of stipend paid. And, um, those, um, students and that are provided on $10 an hour while they're in training. The other ones vary from 12 to $16. It will vary depending on the particular area that they're studying in. And really the stipends are kind of based on what the, um, market wages for those jobs are. So, um, in childcare, we're probably near the top of the spectrum, paying 1150 to $14 an hour for, um, teachers and a little more for, you know, the other positions. And so, you know, to offer those students stipends at a higher level, um, you know, creates kind of a difficult situation when they go to employment and find out that the employment wage is less than the stipend.
How many students do you have enrolled in the childcare program right now?
Um, 12 are enrolled currently. Um, and they're just opening up enrollment for the childcare too. And most of those have indicated that they want to go on to that next, you know, pathway certificate. And, um, outreach to others in the community that they feel confident will, uh, enroll in that. Because again, the childcare need is critical throughout the city and county.
Right. I personally have a great interest in this stipend concept. I've heard of it before and I've funded it through the McDonough Foundation. We've funded stipends. And they do seem to, um, have workforce impact because people can stay in the program.
Correct.
And they can complete the program. So there's value, there's value to this idea. But I'm wearing a different hat today. I'm struggling with, it's a workforce solution. I get that. That's, that's, I guess, my challenge. So thank you.
I mean, yeah, to me, the workforce solution is, well, two critical parts. One is uplifting people and the second is providing workforce solutions in areas that are so critically needed.
Do, do you know Judy? I mean, you have a broad breadth of experience. Are other communities doing this stipend? Is that, is that something that you've read about and you've heard other, other communities are doing this?
I don't have an awareness of it. I know there's other communities that have formed some business, um, um, and, um, I want to say, sorry, uh, business and community partnerships to do some funding, um, of similar sorts. But I don't know of any other programs directly that are providing the, that stipend concept.
It's, it's that human services division that the county is charged with. But we use our human services money to purchase services. We don't have a human services, obviously. We don't have a human services division in county government. Um, one, at one time, I understand the Board of Supervisors and the county did have that, but we don't. So, uh, we don't have that now. So this might be paying stipends to a person and then they can pay their rent instead of applying for general assistance.
Correct. That's, yeah. And really the intent is to remove our, all barriers for, you know, people that want to, um, be able to prepare for a better future for themselves that haven't had that opportunity.
I would think that any sum is helpful. You don't need the full half million dollars.
Any sum is helpful without question. Um, you know, certainly, um, you know, my biggest concern is the initial construction cost. Cause as we go into the sustainability piece, it's hard to be, um, connecting with people for capital and, you know, operational, ongoing support at, at the same time. But it, it's all important and, um, I'm pretty passionate about it. It's at, just spending lots of time at Staples Square, recognizing how many people there are that we can, we can help. If we can provide that training and remove their transportation, childcare and food scarcity issues. So.
I don't, you have questions for her? I was going to ask, um, Ed Raiber.
Questions for Judy whenever we're ready.
Pardon me?
I have a question for Judy.
Oh, of course.
Let her finish. Go ahead, finish.
I was just going to ask, has Staples Square applied for a purchase of services grant?
Yes.
So they're also, they're very similar request before us through purchase of services?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
There may be some overlap, but, um, not substantial. And, and I don't have all the details in my head right now either.
I don't think it was.
No, it definitely wasn't for construction. Yeah.
Go ahead, Judy. Many of our applicants have received partial funding. And, uh, you certainly mentioned, uh, an amount, you said half, um, in your presentation. And of course the numbers aren't there anymore. So is the half the 250,000? Is that 500,000 was your ask? And so half would be 250,000? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, correct, correct. That would substantially help. And again, we, we recognize, as everybody does, the, the difficulty in, you know, scarce resources for many meaningful projects. But again, I really do feel that this provides, um, our programming provides some strong workforce support that's badly needed and helps those underrepresented people, um, have a chance for success.
That's one of the things I kind of wrote down when you were talking about childcare that jumped out at me. And so, uh, certainly, uh, the board here, various different fundings, mainly American Rescue Funds. We've funded Holy Ghost and their childcare, uh, the Dream Center related to their childcare startup. Being Home through Dubuque County Early Childcare and not to be forgotten, Staples Square.
Yep, certainly.
The Maria Center as well. And so the board has funded a lot of those infrastructure programs. And, uh, this would be an actual human resources or the people that could, could serve in any one of those, uh, childcare centers that I had mentioned. In addition to the hospitality need.
Correct.
So maybe one of my question is what, if you had to, uh, either describe and or categorize some of your, uh, students, uh, members that go through it. Are they on the lower income spectrum? Are they on the minority spectrum? Any, any threads that you're seeing?
Um, all of those. So, um, we've, we, our initial culinary program had a person with disabilities, um, walking with a cane. We've had, you know, black, brown, white people in our childcare programming. Actually, to be in the program and get the stipends, they have to be low income. So, um, they're all low income and, um, certainly, um, span the spectrum of people. We've, we had, um, at least, um, one or two participants that, you know, have been identified as having some brain health issues. So we really cover the whole spectrum. You know, we don't, you know, we don't look for the best of the best. We look for people that we can uplift and get to a successful, you know, level in their, in their life.
And what that means is eventually be getting employed in the private sector.
Yeah. And we do have some partnerships with like restaurants, for instance, that are very interested in hiring people from the culinary programs. Certainly childcare centers across town that are interested in that additional certification. And, and I'll just mention quickly, not, not just because, you know, um, to make them employable, but to make a higher quality. You know, I'll be honest, we struggle with attracting and retaining high quality childcare workers. So I'm very hopeful that with, with these additional educational requirements, that there'll be legislative efforts that will recognize childcare as early education and provide some level of funding support, the same as they do for, for the schools. So it, I could go on and on, but it goes way beyond just having childcare workers. And also the quality standards in Iowa are changing. So the level of education that any childcare worker will have to have for the, for the center to, you know, have a, a good quality rating have been accelerated. So lots going on there.
Underpaid work done by women.
Definitely is. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration. Um, we appreciate everything you have done and may be able to do for us. So thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you Judy. Just a second. Ed had something.
Is it operational?
Thank you for what you're doing there Judy.
Thank you.
I wish, uh, we had $60 million that we could fund everybody. But obviously there's been a lot of great ideas and not everybody can be told yes. So.
Totally understand again, appreciate whatever you can do. And, um, we're committed to making a better life for any, it's my retirement job.
Thank you Judy.
Yep.
Further discussion on the two? Discussion on ARP funds?
I always struggle with how much we have distributed and what is left. Does anybody?
And 9.5 allocated, Ed. Correct.
That include the $5 million?
Yes.
This is Ed Raiber. So all of the things that happened further down on the sheet, um, sumate into this, uh, summary table at the top. So you can see, um, where the auditor has clicked there, that represents 9.5 million dollars is the total that you have programmed so far today, coming into today's meeting. 8.682, uh, is, uh, the amount of external projects. And so far, uh, there's been one internal project for the radios for 869,000. So in the, the block below that, you can see, um, the address negative economic impacts from the external partners. So far, you've, uh, done 6.7 million out of that, which includes the $5 million for travel to Dubuque and the stadium project.
Yeah. Invest Water, Sewer, Broadband, you have 29275.
That was.
Not including, uh.
That is the, oh, I'm not standing here looking at that, but if the auditor would like page down, we'd find out what that was.
That's another 500,000 today.
Um. They are, now you went too far. Going with your dad over the phone. Um, so the, the Luxembourg project is listed there as well as the, the Coca River Water Management Authority. So, so the projects that you had actually approved formally today. In the way we're doing this, we had already, they were already reflected on here. You used a formal action today. So those things that you approved today are.
Rickersville, I see that as a forward now to 500,000. Is that in the calculations?
We talked about that earlier today. That's just a clerical error.
That was a clerical error on mine. Yes. So.
So if you add that, if you put 500,000 now, it's, okay. So 9.5 left.
So the, uh, the beauty of the spreadsheet is when the auditor goes to the top. Bam.
Okay. So the answer is 9.1 million? From, from what we have, let's call it committed to.
Yes. You have, um.
Thank you.
Here's Dyersville's food, rural community food pantry.
Pardon me?
I'm just looking to see there that we've, we approved Dyersville's food pantry. It's on the blue section under rural community food pantry, page three.
Yeah, so that's in there.
Typically after you ask me to prepare a resolution, I, I show an actual number there. There was just a mistake that we hadn't done that, um, for the, for the other one. But I believe all the other ones that you've done are reflected on there.
Correct. $10 million that we've spent.
So where would we want to start it?
Well.
Cascades or?
So I guess just for purposes of to let my colleagues know, Jones County is not spending any of their ARPA money. That's what I've been told. They're using it all to reimburse themselves for their, their expenses. So when you see that we've spent $10 million, we've spent the 10 million that we had allocated to the county's recovery some months ago. Right?
We never did allocate that into the, uh, general basic, I don't think. We were going to put that into general basic and we never did.
It, it's not about what account it's in. It's, my question is, is, or comment is that when the ARPA federal guidelines came through, the final determination is that Dubuque County could take 10,000, $10 million and determine that that makes the county hole from the pandemic and that that would leave $9 million to grant to others if we chose. That's one way to look at this.
My understanding, guidance is any communities of our size could, could claim up to 10 million with, without further explanation. And so if you saw Lynn County, that's exactly what they did as well. And so that was new guidance from when we started this application. And so I think in, in good faith, uh, we presented the community and I was talking to many of the applicants. Uh, and they asked, how much money did you have? And I would tell them the amount we've received from American Rescue Funds. And obviously they all have to be qualified. So, so, uh, I am very interested in going through, you know, our recipient list and funding those that the board feels are appropriate, uh, within the full dollar amount. Doesn't mean we have to, but that would be my, my process.
Just to be, just to be clear, the lost revenue portion that we took up to $10 million can be, may be used for some of the items that we've already allocated. In many cases, regular ARPA dollars are going to be a better use there. So just, just to say that we've spent up the $10 million worth of lost revenue is not completely accurate.
Cascades in the room. And I know that they've brought their request for the library to Jones County as well and have made that. But that, I mean, I'm not talking out of school. It's one supervisor who told me that that's how their Jones County is not likely to spend any of their money on any, any requests other than compensating their own county to be made whole for their own county budget. That's what this one supervisor told me that I have frequent contact with.
I think that's common. I mean, I.
There's several.
I don't, city of Dubuque is $28 million. Can't tell you how they're spending it. I don't really know. I haven't really dived into it, but I can tell you they're not going through this process.
Right.
And we, we started. And we started this process. And I'm not sure if we're hedging our bets once again to go back to if we want to stay in this process. But I can say I do. And so I do want to give the applicants consideration and make funding decisions. And we have ample funds to continue.
And I agree with that because if we were going to set a limit, we should have did that before we even started this.
Right, but our limit is going to be all gone. That's what's going to happen because.
That's okay. That's my opinion.
So votes that I may take that are no are because I have prioritized other projects that are not before us yet for decision. Or so in Ann's world, there isn't another $10 million to give away to various organizations if we're going to fund other projects. Okay, so that's the shifting sands that the path we have walked down is showing us at the end that, you know, maybe I do have a different feeling about things now. That's how life experience comes.
That's the way it's been. I mean, there's no handbook that says this is the right one to give to. This is the one, the give and take. If two people agree, okay, it's consensus. I mean, to get everybody to agree on every dollar that we've spent on this would be impossible.
Yes, agreed.
You're looking at $60 million in requests and we only have 19 million. There's got to be a lot of no's and there's got to be a lot of compromises. I'm sorry that some of them got told no, but there's nothing we can do because we don't have the money.
You know, I think it's worth noting, we haven't gone through all of our internal applications fully. We saw, we heard during budget period some of those, but we haven't had the extensive conversation we had with the external, which is good. Glad we've done the external ones. The other point that'll make is an obvious one, that even if I have future ideas, if they're just mine and there's not, you know, majority support, two out of three, then they won't be funded. So saving money for another project yet to discover, you know, there's no guarantee that project will be funded either. So we've got a lot of discussions in hand, some of the large ones that we've discussed in public. And then I think there's been dollar amounts thrown out of 5 million for broadband and others. In my seat, they've got a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do before they're funded. So that all said, that's background, that's context, seems like we need this every time. I'm interested in going through the applicants and making.
But might I just say, Jay, that context is helpful to me because it tells me what you're thinking about that request that came before us that I value very greatly, which is the broadband expansion. So that project, it has a long way to go. So I mean, that's what, this is the only time we get to talk about it. And sadly, we're doing it in a way that we're facing people and I really want to talk to you two. But that tells me where you are.
Agenda weekend. And this is exactly, so I mean, the broadband's got some work. And we were in a public session with Work Session and we went out to the private, a few private enterprises that provide internet services. And the reception wasn't like, wow, build this right now. We could really use it. So it was lukewarm. And so my question of where's the need, where's the demand from private side and/or private providers in the industry? And then certainly, you know, citizens hasn't been great. Most people that want internet have internet. Generally speaking, most people seem to be satisfied with their provider. And the strong demand that I was looking for, I have not found yet for the proposed component we have along Highway 20.
And yet, my understanding of the information that I've learned from our IT director, and it's unfortunate that we're having this conversation when he's not present, but is that the response has been, exceeds his expectations because he has been working with enterprise, not with consumers, but with people who also lay the infrastructure, that the need for redundancy, the need for expansion, that by investing in broadband infrastructure, we can deliver a far better product throughout the entire county and bring equity through infrastructure and internet. So, you know, that I'm sure Nathan's out there right now listening, thinking, oh, God, did Ann just blow that? But that, so we're, I am holding back that funding because I find that project incredibly valuable. And so when people see the number of what there is to spend, I wish to hold that.
And I think it's wise then, as the board, to maybe if that's, you know, if you think about big things in your life, they say try to put those first, you know, get those in the bucket first. Otherwise, you know, and your bucket might be full up and a big thing won't have time to get in there. So it might be wise to flush out some of the broadband further. I have viewed some of those Zoom calls and I've personally been on some of those meetings. And that would not be my categorization of the conversations. But, you know, I'm in a different seat than some of our department leaders are. And so, you know, if we're looking to get resolution on that sooner rather than later and that would help free up decisions, I'm open to just, you know, I'm open to that further discussion with those professionals. I'd hate to pin it on one department head, okay? So that's one person that's very qualified, giving us guidance. But this is, these are, it's a big, large community project.
And I would agree with you, Jay. The feedback I've had has not been overwhelming towards the fiber. I think there's, there is a need or a want. But I think there's other options to follow. I think if we put out RFPs to these agencies and tell them we're tearing up the highway and we're going to have the trench open if they want to lay it in, we get a section of that fiber and the rest is theirs. I think we can do it for substantially less than us paying for everything. Private entity has a need for it. So I just think there's a lot of, there's a long ways to go with this before there's going to be that amount of funding at this standpoint. That's my personal. Question.
It's not, I can't educate you both on this. Jay, you have expertise that far exceeds me. It's only my personal reading and how I view the ability to give the citizens in the far reaches in the hills of Sherrill, right? Give those people the ability and those communities to build redundancy to. So I'm not going to be able to win and I'm not going to get a degree in this. And I'm sure I'm being graded right now and it's not looking good. But I think it's an important thing because I think it's for Dubuque County for the next 20 years. That's what I see. It is, it's whether you believe that that's where we need to go, that remote working is going to be the way that we're going to proceed and whether someone can choose to live in Luxembourg and remote work to Mercy One or remote work to Alliant Energy. That, and that's how I look at the equity. It's not about whether or not they can literally hire somebody. It's whether do we have the infrastructure there to make it an easy choice for them to select.
And what I've learned, and so that was, you know, one of, one of the department heads' lead statement was about equity inclusion related to this. And what I've learned is the proposal on the table for 5 million won't solve that in day one, month one, and probably not even year one. And so Highway 20 is a long way from Luxembourg. And there's no plan to lay fiber from Highway 20, which are their proposal to Luxembourg and/or in the hollows of, or the hollows of Dubuque County. So reaching those that we have difficulty getting service to will be very difficult for the county also to do with a physical infrastructure dig. There may be other solutions that the providers are providing now with satellite and short range and those types of things. And so the fiber, you're absolutely right, will help over 20 years. Absolutely. There's probably, there's no doubt in my mind that that's a scalable technology. But I kind of took the equitable access to the internet off the table. I have Starlink at home because I live right across the railroad. And the providers, God bless them, can't get over or under the railroad. So we've got to shoot to the sky. And so there are a lot of challenges related to that. But to let you know where I'm at, the, hey, let's provide equitable internet service to Dubuque County residents. I don't think this funding and this solution will provide that near term. So therefore, I'm less interested in that component as well.
There's nothing before us that's going to provide this for the whole county. That's an impossibility. But it's first steps and this, as we know, aligns with the old highway reconstruction that's supposed to happen next year. So it's time and opportunity and we do need to have some cash in hand. Broadband is specifically stated by the Biden administration as being a motivational factor in doing the ARPA funding, as is the things that we're talking about today, four amounts, the things we're talking about today, which is Stipple Square, working on those people who are left behind in our minority community. So they're targeted as well. So that turns our discussion then to the libraries, right? The room is filled with library individuals. And if you are slicing our remaining $9 million into pockets of $3 million for libraries, it starts to evaporate pretty fast. And are we going to have funding to do any other big projects? Or do you feel that libraries are the big project? I don't know how that fits in ARPA. It isn't categorized in ARPA as meeting any need that was driven by COVID or spiked by COVID. The city of Asbury has told me that when they built the library, the supervisors at the time provided them with the gift of $50,000. So, you know, when we we look at that, I don't know where you are if you are still setting aside very large numbers of our remaining balance to dedicate to libraries. If that's true, then that helps me decide how I want to vote on the million-dollar project from the River Museum. I mean, it's all about the shifting of funding based on what is known versus unknown.
And again, I agree with Jay on the fiber because, yeah, 20 years from now, I can see, you know, it's needed, it's purpose. But that does nothing for the here and now. There's no shortage of internet. My neighbor he lived here and worked in New York. So obviously, the connection on my place must be pretty good if she's remote working to New York. But that doesn't benefit me. I still think if we can reach out to these other companies, hey, we're going to open up the trench. If you want to lay a line in, Dubuque County gets one strand, whatever. For our purposes, that's fine. They, we have it opened up. They put it in. If they pay us for it, they do. If they don't, well, it's not costing us anything. I don't see spending 5 million to run conduit all the way out there. And it's it's going to lay there for years until we get funding to extend it. There's no shortage of internet in Piasta, Farnley, any of those towns. They all have internet. That's, that's my thought. You talk about the libraries. Okay, it doesn't specify that, but I'm pretty sure we gave all kinds of money to summer reading programs and stuff like that. Am I right? Library, that's a summer reading program. I think these funds are going to our communities out in the county. My personal feelings on it.
My vantage point kind of, you know, supervisors are probably gaining clarity on, you know, uses of funds and the projects. And it always gets a little tougher when you, you know, start to have less funds available. But I'm a strong proponent of infrastructure. So if we can build hard physical assets with these funds, I have confidence that the community and the volunteers, along with the other, you know, governments will rally to provide the services and the people. And so, you know, I'm, that's why libraries would be, you know, high on my list to fund. Field of Dreams is infrastructure as well, high on my list to fund. And we do have other programs and we've heard from, you know, just some today that are about, you know, operations and education and stipends, which are not infrastructure. But my vantage point, I'm prioritizing infrastructure programs. And the libraries would be high on those lists, along with some of the other community projects that we receive from the other communities. And from where I'm scoring right now, we have the ability to fund all of those. Now, it doesn't include all the internal ones, but we have that ability.
Would you like to start with Cascade Library Project forward at $1 million?
I'm good with that amount. I think Cascade, through their participation in previous projects, has at least voiced the, you know, the enthusiasm and the planning that they can get their library built if we provide the million-dollar funding. And comparatively to other communities, it's a lower dollar amount. So I would feel comfortable funding the $1 million for the Cascade Library and then the pressures on Cascade to take it over the goal line before 2026. But from what you voiced, I feel confident they'd be able to do that.
I would be comfortable with that also. They do have funds to raise to get to where they need to be, but they seem like they are all in on this. They have skin in the game, so I'd definitely be in favor of that also. Are you looking for a motion if we want to move it or?
I will make that motion. So I'll make a motion to appropriate approve $1 million American Rescue Funds for the Cascade Public Library Project.
I will second that. Have a motion in a second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
This library is not open to everyone. We have never resolved the underlying issue with our library system.
Library is open to anyone. You may not be able to check out a book, but it's open to anyone in the United States. You just cannot check out a book unless you're a member.
Have we concluded the discussion about access and utilization of libraries? Has that stakeholder conversation happened? Is that, I understand there's a meeting later this week.
This is Ed Raver. Information that I think I passed on over the weekend to the supervisors came from the, some of the stakeholders, including the Dubuque County Library District and the City of Cascade, I think actually Lisa Cotter helped author that, that outlines some of the state code and some Supreme Court decisions about requiring cities to levy for library access for their citizens. But that does not require them to do that. So libraries, as I understand it, are required. Libraries in Iowa work in relationships with local governments, not with just an individual. And what we have in the county is a number of communities that have a library. They provide that access to their citizens. There are, and that includes the Dubuque County Library District, which has five members with libraries. There is an accommodation or another agency, the Dubuque County Library Agency, that is essentially a subscription for local governments without a library to purchase that. There are several communities that do. There are several communities in the county that do not.
I would say to Lisa, you're here, Sageville should be listed as a, Sageville is a city that does not contribute to any library.
Right. Sageville is one of the communities that is not part of the agency and does not have its own library.
Right. Don't do anything for library services.
The the library agency of those four library systems in the county do reach out annually to the members, to the cities, city councils that do not belong to the agency. And I've taken, I think I mentioned in an email, I have talked with some of those mayors of those cities and it just has not been a priority for them. And so they have not done that. The, something that was in a press release locally on Friday that I passed along the underlying. on Friday, um, that I passed along the, the underlying memorandum of understanding between the Dubuque Community School District and the, um, Dubuque Library, Carnegie Stout Library and the Dubuque County Library District is an arrangement where they are providing, um, with their student IDs, library access to, to actually check materials out to students of the library, students in the Dubuque Community School District. And I believe that, um, the partners.
During the school year.
No.
Yes, it begins, it's only running during the school year. That's the term of the agreement that was set forth before us in the, in the packet. And I know there's one also out in the county that you're piloting, Amanda, one project.
Eric, and I would be interested in Cascade, you know, there's certainly a lot of libraries and Cascade is on the docket right now. And Amanda, appreciate your comments as well. I know you know a lot about libraries, but if, my, my question to Cascade is, is in, if you receive these funds for one million dollars, either in practice or contractually or by your processes, can you allow citizens throughout Dubuque County to access the library and check out materials? That, that's my question. So whoever can answer it, and if the chair would allow, I would want an answer to that.
I'm Lisa Cotter, the interim city administrator in Cascade. Thank you for considering this request. So the information that I tried to gather to educate myself, obviously, and to provide information to everyone in Cascade throughout the county and most specifically to the three of you as supervisors, shows you that in the current structure, there's restrictions. There's restrictions in the type of, um, state code that we have and in that agency agreement. So we are committed to trying to think outside of the box. And that's what I told you from the beginning. If it were to mean that we were to leave the agency, which is giving up fifteen hundred dollars to receive your million, that's what, when I spoke to Melissa, she said, well, we could leave the agency. I said, that's the simple answer. But to really be forward thinking, it's to make changes. And so we could simply say, you know, today I'm going to stand here and request of the city council that we drop out of the agency. And thank you for the million dollars if you proceed that way. But I don't think that's the long-term solution. I think that we should be looking just like the press release that Mr. Raver referred to with regard to the students. That really is a violation of the agency agreement also. So it shows you that we can think differently and that we need to think differently. My request, along with Amanda and Melissa in the, in the memo that we forwarded to you this weekend, is we would like to be able to proceed with knowing that you have committed those funds. And in return, I want you to know that I will do my best and I believe everyone else that's involved will do their best to make changes because I think they're warranted. But which one goes first really is the key. And so we are committed, if it meant that at the end of the day, the agency stood strong to the way that they are, I believe that Cascade would be willing to remove themselves from the agency to receive your gift and, um, contribution from ARPA funds. But that's not what I hope will happen. I hope we'll see change.
I definitely like the spirit of your attitude in, in, in that answer. And, uh, uh, the only correction I have, it's not our gift to you, it is your funds. These are federal funds paid by federal tax dollars. We're just administering those. And so, um, I think I have my answer and, uh, you won't be breaking ground tomorrow, right? Expecting to check? So you have a little time to resolve this. You and everyone I've met with in Library District, along with the volunteers, seem really smart people. I'm very confident you'll, you'll figure out the access piece. So my, my motion stands.
I would just bring it back to the board here. So, um, the things that you said, which is leave the agency is probably striking terror in the woman behind you standing against the doorway, the director of the Dubuque County Library System. So in the, the materials you presented, I'm going to use another example, the city of Rickardsville. There, there are, they pay fifty-five hundred dollars a year to belong to the agency. And there were twenty-one visits by their citizenry. What, what, what could happen as we incentivize people to leave the agency is Rickardsville will stop. Luxembourg, Centralia, they pay thirty-five hundred dollars a year and they, they're, well, they actually also use the city of Dubuque. But that, that's the situation that I, that I fear. I love libraries. I have about 12 novels started at home right now. But that's the cascading effect of this, pardon Cascade, but, but.
No pun intended.
As we go through this, I don't want to see budget time next year when everyone's participation per capita must skyrocket or go up because other cities are deciding that they no longer wish to participate in the agency. It works because there's a sum of cities that participate.
I agree with you. And if I can address that, um, when we zoomed, um, Amanda brought that exact point up is what's the incentive for the four that are in? If we were to open it up and say, let's do some kind of temporary situation and see if more people participate from those that are not. But some of it is marketing and some of it is appealing to the four who are paying to stick with us and not asking to be freeloaders from the other eight or nine communities that don't pay. It's how can we look long-term and say, let's make a short-term fix by allow, it's not a fix, a short-term decision to allow others to participate in hopes, not that you leave, but that others, we gain others. And sometimes you have to take a leap of faith. A very goofy example is Sirius XM gives out free music on your phone or on your car for a reason. They don't do it on holiday weekends because it's just free. They hope other people will come along. And so what my hope is, is that we say to the four who are in, please don't bail, even though you could. And it's the easy answer. Because the other answer that I would say is we get fifteen hundred dollars. So then the next question is, well, Dubuque and Dyersville aren't getting anything from ARPA right now. So why are they going to agree to the change? Because Cascade and the county are gaining if you approve these two requests. And I'd say the same thing, please don't bail. We all gain by you allocating funds to the libraries. And I would be willing to even, as opposed to bailing on the agency, say, we'll give up our fifteen hundred dollars to Dyersville and the, and to the city of Dubuque for those temporary years to open it up. To say, if you feel like you're being harmed because you don't get capital funds from ARPA if you approve these, then let's take a leap of faith. There's lots of ways that we can try to be in this together. And I guess the test is coming. Is how much will we work together? Because you're right, they can bail. But my pitch would be stick with us and let's see if we can gain some more partners. Because in the end, if you keep paying and we gain some, we're all better off to fund libraries with a higher number. But I think it's how you present it. Is yep, we have eight freeloaders now, if that's how you want to negatively look at it by us opening up the doors. But we don't have to look at it that way. We can say, we're inviting them to come and see what beautiful things can happen at the libraries. That's my approach.
I like that approach, Lisa, actually, given them, you know, we're not trying to chase the ones away that we have. We're trying to draw more in. Give them a free month, whatever.
Even a couple of years, just stick with us.
I wouldn't go out quite that far, just see how it works for a six-month period that you'd have feedback to give back to the town and say, your residents use the library this many times or checked out this much material, would you join us? You know?
I think it's doable, but if people have to think differently and people have to collaborate. And that's uncomfortable sometimes, but that's what I'm committed to. And I believe that's what we talked about with Amanda and Melissa. You know, we're going to push for that. And that's why we asked for the agency to meet. And our hope is, is that we can see the commitment from you on the two library projects to be able to show that, that you are making a commitment to us and that we're committed to making a change.
So your meeting is going to disband the agency? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 not at all. We're trying to say, how can we work to address a number of these concerns? How can we make it more open? How can we be more inviting to the communities that aren't? You know, right now we send them an invoice and a la- letter and say, you know, this is what it takes to be in the agency. Would you like to join? But maybe we have to think about that differently. All this is, is the four communities have, um, their reps, they have their directors and the reps from their boards. And then Kevin is also on it. And then I'll be attending. And so we're just going to talk about your concerns, wanting it to be more open. And what can we do differently to revamp? And my proposal isn't to change the agency. It would be something like an addendum to the contract that has some temporary nature to it, to say, what can we do? And the example of what happened through the school system is an example of thinking out of the box. When you truly comply with the agency rules, I don't think from what I've learned that that is exactly in the spirit of what it said. We're letting kids go in from communities that their city councils don't pay. But we're thinking differently. And so we can present that idea. So we're just talking about what can we do different? No disbanding. All I said was, if it absolutely came down to it, if you were going to say, can you open up your doors in Cascade? The only way we can is to not be with the agency right now. So my hope is we'll make changes, not leave the agency.
Your understanding of what it is that you're telling people to do, open their doors to everybody?
Uh, this is a funding, it's a question to supervisor for both of us, or?
Right. So are you saying that Cascade must serve everybody? Are you saying Farley must serve everybody? That's what I heard Jay say several weeks ago. Right? That's, that was.
Libraries are open to anyone that wants to walk into a library. Anyone, you can be from Hawaii and come to Cascade and walk in their library. It's open to everyone. And I check out a book if you're from Hawaii, obviously that would create a problem. How are they going to get the book back? But the library is open to anyone in the world.
Thank you.
You just can't not, you can't check out.
Understand. Supervisor Wickham, your position previously was that unless someone could check out a book from anywhere in the country, you were a no on the library project.
My, my question to, to Lisa today, um, we can go through this again, if, if you have questions on that, uh, was, do you feel confident in, would these funds be contingent on having access? One, physical access and two, to check out materials for any Dubuque County resident? And she just assured me that, yes, that is, your intent is to make that happen.
Some way. And my hope is to do it collaboratively with everybody throughout.
And I loved your attitude and your answers. I think you're right on with, with the individual approach. Also know from my, my end is if you cannot make that happen, you know, there'll be contracts, there'll be agreements that state that. I mean, we need access to this. And I hear that, and I see heads nodding that you want access. I'm sure no librarian likes to be the, you know, the, was the bouncer at the door? Uh, so, you know, I'm very confident you'll figure it out. This is really bad for him to figure this out. So I'm confident the library people and the other administrators will, will resolve this before the funds are distributed.
And I think by you stating that as your hope and wishes, that that helps gain traction with the agency to say. So that's again, where to me, having the cart before the horse, meaning the funding from you being approved helps us in that conversation. I think.
In one comparison, and I just, you know, I got a headache already, but, um, you know, this board, along with other governments and a few nonprofits, just, you know, dedicated eight million dollars are appropriated, eight million dollars for Field of Dreams. Where's the agreement for that? And where's all the details of that? And I don't see anyone beating up the Field of Dreams. These are book-loving library people. I mean, I just don't get it. And I've seen this in other issues, but the sky is not falling. Okay? This is a good thing. We can fund the libraries. We're very confident you'll figure out access. That is my intent. Okay? So I will, will be there with you on that. But if that's your answer today, my motion stands and I would like to appropriate funding.
Do you have anything further?
No, I, it's once again, just a, a habit of a lawyer to be cautious. And to, when you say it violates, that's concerning to me. That we're moving forward with federal money, knowing that it's violating an understanding of an agency agreement. That's a concern. That's not lightly. That's not, just wave away. Those agreements are binding.
But they can be changed. And having pushed behind asking people to change is a lot easier to help with change. Sometimes there's collaborative efforts and sometimes there's a little show from behind and a combination of the two hopefully makes us successful.
And Lisa, you're new and I know several of the mayors, so good luck pushing.
I have faith.
Have a motion in a second to approve funding for the Cascade Library.
And I just asked the chair, is this with any kind of, do we want to put any kind of restriction on this? Saying it has to be for access? What are we saying?
That would be a motion, my motion's on the table. My motion stands. Um, I'll remind the board, um, if we're still in discussion, that this, we don't throw money, a million dollars from the courthouse coup de lo or whatever you call that thing out there. We have process, we have procedure, we have highly paid staff that draw up the agreements and give us guidance related to compliance. And so this is not a nilly willy process and I'm, my motion stands.
And your motion is what then?
Motion was to approve the funding at a million dollars for the Cascade Library. The building would have to be constructed by, I would say, 2026, correct?
With American Rescue Funds, that, that was my motion. It didn't include a date, but that date is obviously implied in the funding.
I seconded it. I have a motion in a second to approve the ARP funding for the Cascade Library. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Carries. You're nothing. Next, we have the Dubuque County Historical Society. Request is one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-four thousand. Project.
Uh, from one million to one million, pick all the easy ones to go first.
I, this was one of the priorities for me to fund. I think that there's a lot of brilliant work being done there. Um, Aaron, if you want to give us an update, that'd be helpful to me. Is that okay with the chair?
That's fine.
Um, well, time has passed. The update is that the project, sorry, Aaron Dragato, um, former VP of Development for the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium. Um, this is my hopefully swan song, um, as they say, for, um, the, the Dubuque County Historical Society River Museum. The project is still in play, so it hasn't changed. The only thing that has changed is the timeline because of when we requested and where the funding is being allocated now.
Funding amount is the same?
Funding amount is currently the same.
There was some, uh, discussion early on about the ham house being part of this.
That was, uh, so the Dubuque County Historical Society embodies a 14-acre campus. The ham site is included. However, this is a tourism grant meant to bring people into Dubuque County. We, we, we understand that the focus would be on the River Museum particularly, to a ninety-ten degree, not, not the ham site itself. Cause we, we know where our audience likes to go.
Request, I couldn't, Aaron, thank you for, for being here.
Yeah.
Um, in light of some of the changes and the large dollar amount, I would like to have a separate 15-minute work session where you've got your presentation and your actual, you know, your application in front of us to be able to make good decisions. For me, at least, that's, that's what I would prefer and not to attempt to resolve this at this moment.
I would probably agree with that because there is some changes and I guess current one, the end, did you have any?
I, I, I mean, obviously if people think they need more information, there aren't any changes. It's just a change in time because of our delay.
I'll be, I'll be straightforward. So, um, you know, I've been in presentations and speaking for organizations my life. I I'm very happy for you for a new position. But I want whoever is going to be at the podium to be at their, and no Kurt Strand, sir, I'm not asking for today. So that's why I'm not putting him on, on the spot today. But I would like to, to hear from, uh, the leadership, the existing future leadership, existing and future leadership of the historical society related to the funding. And, and give it all. And so, and, and, you know, I've hopefully that didn't sound like I, I don't want to hear from you. I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're getting this right. And, and it's more from my, my ignorance because I have a lot of questions that I do have.
Okay. I think the information is Aaron's. You put together the, the, that, but I also see Kurt here too. So however, that needs to work. If, if it's considered not ready or whatever, that's, that's fine.
Kurt Strand, so President, CEO. We can walk through all these different things for you. Aaron worked with our team on that. Paula Newhouse, who is also a grant writer, is unfortunately had a celebrational life today.
Paula Newhouse, who is also a grant writer, is unfortunately at a celebrational life today. Otherwise, she would have joined us. Tommy Lang, our VP of Finance and Operations, is on the phone. This is a team process. And so if you're talking about tourism, you're talking about bringing this in, Erin wouldn't manage all these different types of things. Wendy Scardino manages all the marketing component of this. We have an IT AV person that manages all of that component. So it's really, how do we get people to come in here? How do we attract them from a much larger area? How do we bring them in, in a way to celebrate the Dubuque County? And one of the draws is the River Museum Aquarium with a blockbuster exhibit with a number of different things, with more educators out on the floor, to entice people to come to our community and to our county. That's wonderful. I'm, I'm like, I thought I'm just, if I don't, I'd go back to my quest, my request. Um, if we want to dive into it, what I'm going to get, I want your application up here. I want your slides up here. That's kind of what I'm getting at, in addition to, you know, that. But I, I made the request to the chair and my colleagues to task for a separate work session. So I'm just, how would you like to proceed?
I would like to have a separate work session with it, and, uh, it's a lot of money, the one point one million. And I guess I was, there was two re- ARPA requests, one for the ham house and one for the river, correct?
Another good reason for a work session. Well, let me ask you, would, would you be comfortable coming back again for a fifteen-minute overview?
Glad to come back again.
We've, we've- That would make me feel better. I've heard Supervisor Pataff express that as well.
I, I showed two requests from the Dubuque County Historical Society, one for the ham house and one for tourism. Now, these are both ARP funds.
There you go.
One was eighty-sixth because we, we had more money to work with.
Oh, okay. This was just on the original. Not a problem. Now I understand. Yeah, let's reschedule this for another fifteen-minute work session. Please have, uh, just the update of where we're at and where we're going with it. Really appreciate that.
Thank you for your patience on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin, for being here.
Okay, we'll go to... City of Eppworth, baseball field lights at Centennial Park, three hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Chair Pataf, we do have Sandy Gassman from the City of Eppworth on Zoom, if you have any questions.
Okay.
Their baseball one right before the library, it's like a theme.
How many questions are concerned?
Sandy has audio, I know she's teaching in Mississippi.
Yes, I do have audio, can you hear me?
Fantastic, yes.
Yes.
I'm at Nancy Shrek's computer, so I'm under her name. I changed my name for today.
Mayor of Eppworth, though, right?
Yes.
Awesome.
Still mayor.
How many questions, Ian? Ian.
My comment would be, I would be supportive of this project. I think it follows the themes of our, our smaller communities of their requests, um, of how to use these federal ARPA money. Um, not all of them in an exact same timeframe, but as far as applicants in, but this seems like a very good community project, which will add vitality to the Eppworth and surrounding area. Um, and aligns well with, with the City of Eppworth's doing and its infrastructure. So I'm a supporter.
I'd agree, I'm in support of the project. I believe it will actually, uh, pay dividends to City Eppworth. The, uh, evening ballgames, uh, for the high school or for the semi-pro team will definitely draw people to the town and bring revenue to their city. So I'm, I am in favor of this project also.
Make a motion to approve the City of Eppworth's ARPA funding application for the baseball field lights at Centennial Park in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
I will second that.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve ARP funds for the Eppworth, uh, baseball field lights at three hundred and ninety-five thousand. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have the Farley-
Thank you very much.
You bet, Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor Gassman.
Thank you. Next, we have the Farley Library. Discussion. Obviously, I believe we had enough library discussion already, it just, uh, I am in support of this project, uh, not at the level that's requested at three point four, obviously. I would be in support of two point six. I think they would be able to get it done at that level. They still have a lot of community fundraising to do. But they have to have some skin in the game for this also, this project. Uh, did have more COVID-related issues. Um, and Cascade Library hardly got thrown out of their library kind of because of the COVID.
Certainly, I would support the two point six or, or higher if, if needed. Uh, my only question would be, because I think it's a great community project full of infrastructure, the things we've said before, is to make sure that Farley is, you know, if the funding level is at the dollar mark you said, is that they would, uh, feel that they could complete the project. Um, in the general scope, might not be as big or as needed, but that they could complete the project, some are the question of Cascade.
Yes.
I'm Lauren Modernak, I'm the City Clerk for Farley. We do already have, um, a private donor of two hundred thousand. If we can get, um, at that two point six request from Dubuque County, I'm fully, fully, I, I believe that we can absolutely raise the funds privately as well as with additional, um, grants. In order to apply for many of the grants, we do have to have at least a sixty percent of that, of those funds, just to show that, you know, we can proceed with the project, especially like with the DRA grant, we have to have some type of nest egg started.
Thank you, Lauren. Yeah, I think Farley, you know, has come a long way. So they have plans, they have designs, they had, uh, input from, from the public. They have a site located, they have the ability to, to gain the ground and, and move forward. So, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with your two point six mark.
And I feel that amount is too high, so I'll be voting no.
I would make the motion to approve two point six million of ARP funds for the Farley Library Project.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the two point six million for a Farley Library Project. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Very, two to one. Congratulations, Lauren. Next, we have the Four Mountains Foundation, five hundred thousand. Sent it today, sorry. Ian.
I think this targets a community that is directly related in President Biden's, um, funding that he put forward. And I would make a motion to approve five hundred thousand dollars to Four Mountains.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve five hundred thousand for Four Mountains, uh, Community Access and Engagement, uh, project. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have Steeple Square.
And same, same thing, if not even more dramatically so. Um, this is Workforce Solutions. This is, um, attempting to lift people out of poverty, giving skill sets to parents to show a different way forward. And, um, so therefore, I would also make a motion for five hundred thousand dollars to the funding of Steeple Square.
I will second that motion.
A motion and a second to approve five hundred thousand ARP funds for Steeple Square. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Said aye.
Oh, didn't hear you, sorry. Aye, that carries. Is that, at work, is that all of the, uh, I'm today, I think that was all of the external-
With the exception of the Historical Society.
Right, uh-
Every, I believe every one, every other-
The, uh, Bangston Sewer one. Uh, they need to do a study before they can even do anything with their septic. The study would be between twenty to thirty thousand. Agent, I, I can have Ed give us context on this, but if we would approve twenty thousand, that they can get their study done, that they would know what they need to do. But we'd give twenty, if there's more, obviously, they're going to have to come up with funding to do that. They have to, uh, come up with some funding for this. Aye.
I don't understand it anymore, so go ahead. We could give them money today if you'd like.
Through the DNR, Bangston has to do a study before they can, they applied for the five hundred thousand. Or before they could just spend that money on the septic, they have to do, get this studied up. But I think it'd be more advantageous for us to help pay for that study, to see what they need down the road, and to give them this money, and they still going to have to do, it's, it's going to be about a year process by the time they get this money, get the, the study done, it gets to the DNR, and the DNR approves it or whatever, so.
What action are you hoping to take today?
Uh, we could approve twenty thousand for their project.
And the cost?
Ed, would you want to give some context on that, or?
I don't see Bangston in the room.
I would be interested, that is, my main question, Ed, would be if, from your understanding and working with City of Banks, and we greatly appreciate it, you know, they're a very small community, is, is that study funding, the study, is that helpful?
In my conversations with, uh, their engineer, the DNR, Iowa Rural Water Association, as well as, uh, uh, backing, uh, through to ECIA and their rural utility system, um, um, their focus and all those groups, and, and we've done this collaboratively with the City Clerk, Becky Mouser, Betty Mouser, uh, is that, that is the first step that they need to take. The application that they've presented to you wasn't for a particular system. They're just like trying to figure out what would happen down the road. So, um, the DNR's letter has asked them to prepare a facilities plan to help say what they're going to do, so that is the first step. The, um, the cost spread of, depending on what they run into, um, uh, has been gauged at any quarter from fifteen to thirty thousand, depending on what all analysis they have to do and options they have to pursue. They may have to look at a variety of different options in the City of Bangston. So, um, just because they're small may not mean that it's the cheapest one.
Could you present us with some kind of a quote, something in writing?
That is, I'd be happy to. I could come back with something that, that looks more quote-like, yes.
All right, well, that will, uh, I guess stay moving on, uh, people, uh, there isn't any other ones that we need to, uh?
I, I have one last clarification, and I spoke with Chair Pataf, and I wasn't on the same page, and so I, I may had misread that. Um, a, a week or, I think it was two weeks ago, there was a discussion about Dubuque Main Street. You had kind of had settled on a number, but when presented with a resolution, the director had left, and I, I sensed that you were just asking for more information, so clear-
Like to have them come back in a work session, like we're having the River Museum come back.
Okay, so that, I, I was preparing them, and they've had some discussion about that, and so I, I, I would arrange that.
Okay, that would be fine with me. Good with you, Jay?
Yeah, I think a work session would be, would be in line, since there's been some changes as well. Chair Pataf, we do have a question on Zoom from Susan Arum, asking if we will be discussing Silt's proposal today.
Yes, we can go to that one now. Yeah, the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust, Silt Working Bufflers, Buffers for Cleaner and Resilient Food System. Uh, ask of five hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Forward is on, if there would be questions?
My priority project for me, I would fully fund it.
I'm in that same camp. I, I know they had modified, revised, I think, uh, the original proposal to the five hundred and seventy thousand. And so, since we have Susan on, the other, you know, redundant question I would have is, do, uh, do Silt believe with our five hundred and seventy thousand dollar funding that they still could, could achieve the goals? Everyone's-
Susan, can you hear?
Yes, I'm sorry, there was an interruption. Can you repeat the question?
My question was if, uh, we were able to fund the five hundred and seventy thousand dollar request, I believe that's a revised request, that, uh, you still be able to have significant impact related to your objectives, because, uh, your original, uh, your original quote was, your original application was much higher.
Yes, um, we originally committed to twenty farms. Uh, we reduced it to fourteen. I would say at the five seventy, um, we should be able to, uh, to definitely get between ten and fourteen. Um, but of course, we would work our, our buns off to, to get to fourteen farms. Um, we're, we've, we've really, as you know, uh, really scraped it to get it down from the original proposal, so. But we're pretty confident with Eric Schmeckel's, uh, cooperation and working closely with him, that we can, we can meet, um, almost all of the goals of the original proposal, except reduced numbers.
Very good, thank you. Okay, do you have any further questions?
I don't have anything.
I will make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, funding for five hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars, American Rescue Funding to the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust, otherwise known as Silt.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the ARP funding for the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust, Silt, an amount of five hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries.
Thank you, thank you very much. I truly appreciate it. I hope we can live up to your, your trust.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Are we, uh, through all of them now? So? Oh, the YMCA?
Forward on it, I thought it was a-
Dubuque County Community YM, YMCA, uh, Road Rehabilitation, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Question?
There honestly isn't any amount of money that I would give to this project. I don't think it falls inside the ARPA guidelines, as I have interpreted them.
I wouldn't claim to be an expert on all the ARPA guidelines, but, uh, it's a private nonprofit facility, like many of the others we've just funded today and previously. And it is infrastructure, just like we funded others. So if we'd have trouble with requirements on this one, we might have trouble on a whole bunch of them. But, but, but I'm confident that the Auditor's Office and others would have advised us, so that this was, uh, one to be warned about. So I'm, I'm very confident that it does, if it's a requirement. I'm a supporter of it, it's, it's infrastructure in the community. Um, they have altruistic goals related to their, their mission, and they certainly have the need.
Are you at the full amount, Jay, or?
Uh, I can't be at the full amount. I can't be at the full amount. I'm, I'm sure the organization, I wouldn't want to speak for them, but I'm sure they would have infrastructure needs at, at any level related to the road in improving the conditions of the road. My understanding is this would allow them to be hard-surfaced, which would allow for easier access for handicap elderly and obviously runoff issues. That's what I've been told by leadership there, Tony, during my tour.
I'm generally in support of it also.
Yeah, we, in order to, we've, we've pared back a few and we've supported a few at full amounts. If the board felt that we should restrict or pare back a little bit, I would, I would be supportive of a number.
Oh, excuse me. It was at a hundred thousand and prices went up and they went to a hundred and twelve. Which
honest.
Very honest, I'll give them that. That was, that was on the hundred thousand and a hundred and twelve is kind of like, well, you gotta have a little skin in the game too, and which I mean they do, but but I can go with the hundred and twelve or a hundred.
I think in fairness, probably the original hundred thousand dollar application. I'm, I'm comfortable at that level.
There is a lot of activity up there and for the handicap, you know, accessibility is huge. The road, the way it is, it, it definitely needs improvements, which they can't afford without our help, so.
I, is there any further discussion? I will make a motion to approve a hundred thousand dollars American Rescue Funds for the Dubuque Community YMCA and NYWCA for their Union Park Camp Road Rehabilitation Project.
And I will second that. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? For one hundred thousand for Dubuque Community YM, NYWCA Camp, Union Park Road Rehabilitation, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Carries two to one. Now have we gone through all of them? Because I have the one up on the screen and I can't move it up and down. Okay, last item on the agenda today is a work session to discuss with possible action on employee grievance. It would be my recommendation that the board would pass this, pass step three and move this forward to step four, to a private independent third-party arbitrator, discussion if needed.
I would like to have the Human Resources person give us context, please.
Yes, I can. And actually share the union contract provisions where we're currently at. So on May twenty third, US Supervisors received an email requesting a grievance be moved along to what under this contract would be step three. So in order to be in compliance with the union contract, the Board of Supervisors has fifteen working days to respond to the grievance. And then, so whatever the decision here is that we would put something in writing for Chair Potoff to sign and present that back to the union. In a court, just based off of Chair Potoff's, if that was the action of the board was to take no action on this grievance, that would allow the union and the employee at their choice to move it to step four, which would be an arbitrator, which is with the employee, Public Employee Relations Board, they would provide an arbitrator for this. And that would be a binding decision.
Have a recommendation?
I'm just, I'm just staying where you're at in this process. We're currently at step three. And if no action were to be taken, or if there was action taken in the grievance, felt that it was not settled at that point, then it would move on to step four.
So the proper, I'll make a motion. The motion is to move the grievance to arbitration.
For my clarity, is that step four?
Yeah, that would be step four, correct.
I, I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to move the grievance to step four, independent arbitrator. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is all we have on the agenda.
A date or a time to meet again for our Human Resources discussion.
Wednesday, I am free.
Yeah, Wednesday I would request that we do it at one PM or later in the day.
Right. It would have to be in the afternoon, I'm sorry.
Throwing it out. I've always up for the board working more and even working on evening meetings. Do we, does it have to be, why are we doing a special meeting on Wednesday and not just Mondays?
That's for the Human Resources and Anthony's.
This Don Sherman resigned, because Don Sherman resigned on Friday, giving us until June. Her last date will be June seventeenth, and I think that this board should have some conversation with her so that we can decide what our next steps will be in a professional way.
Additionally, I have received the Personnel requisition from Sheriff Kennedy, if we wanted to put that on that.
We always have work to do, so there's, there's always stuff pending. I mean, my question isn't, you know, you guys are strongly wanting to, it's just why not just discuss this on Monday, in the light of the day, on our normal work session?
Supervisor Potoff will be.
Well, there you go. I did not know that.
I think I've told you a few times that I'm leaving. I will be gone for the thirteenth.
That's why you're a good teacher and I'm an improving student.
And I will be chairing that meeting as vice chair because his internet connection will be the best it can be.
Say that again? But so you're, you're here Wednesday?
I am here Wednesday and Thursday.
You'll be chairing the meeting Wednesday or?
Yes, Wednesday I would. Monday, Anne, will be chairing because I'll be in South Dakota.
Sounds good.
Just be zooming in.
The Okay, I am, I am now fully understanding.
The Auditor's Office could accommodate one PM on Wednesday if that would work for the Supervisors.
I would ask that it be after one. I have, I could be here by one fifteen.
Oh, we, we could do two PM as well or one thirty, whatever's most
Thirty is great. Does that work for everybody?
Thirty work for you, Jay?
Earlier is better, back on the one. I have schedules that I'll be moving.
One fifteen?
One fifteen's better than one thirty?
Fifteen, you said you can make?
You bet.
Well, how long do we anticipate being in session? Do we have that expectation?
I would venture a guess to say forty-five minutes to an hour and fifteen minutes.
Wonderful. I'm, I'm comfortable with one fifteen.
We'll have an agenda published greater than twenty-four hours prior to one fifteen on Wednesday.
So let it be maybe open enough that we can talk about recruitment generally. I don't want it to be just specific to the Human Resources position, but that we're going to learn from Dawn about recruitment overall. I'd like to have some discussion.
We can publish it with, with fairly open language to allow latitude for discussion.
Good for me.
To adjourn?
I will second that motion.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.